That's somebody's theme song. Okay, we're on. This is the Cadillac City Council Meeting, September 4th, 2012, at 7:00 PM. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Chris, could we please have a roll call for our regular meeting?
Councilmember Malama.
Here.
Shippers.
Here.
Spelman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Malama.
Here.
Mayor Barnett.
Here as well, thank you. First up is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any proposed changes for the agenda tonight, Marcus?
No, we don't.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. And there's our support. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. Chris, could we please have a roll call on this item?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Next up are public comments for Cadillac City Council Meeting. There's two of these, one at the beginning and one at the end. Public comments are requested to be limited to three minutes if at all possible. I entertain public comment at this point. The council will rather. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and approach the mic. Give us your name and your address and proceed. Sure.
If this is an item on the agenda for later discussion, do you want comments then or would you prefer them now?
We actually prefer them now and it depends, I guess, what item it is.
Okay.
Sure.
My name is Ed Wendover. I'm at 420 May Street.
Okay. Hi, Ed.
Hello. I'd like to speak to the ongoing discussions about the organization of public safety.
Okay.
And I would simply like to point out that after much study, it seems like the time is here to listen to the consultants that count, and those are your voters, not the paid consultants. I think the right thing to do is very clear, and we would like you tonight to move ahead with the Police Department and Fire Department organization. And we'd like it to be unanimous. I think that that would send a very good message to support the police and fire folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing and hearing no one else come forward, we are going to close public comment and proceed to our consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda. The city council minutes from August 20th, the request from the Cadillac Garden Club to hang a banner over Mitchell Street from November 27th through the 4th of this year for the Holiday Home Tour, and finally, a request from the Cadillac Band Boosters to hang a banner over Mitchell Street, October 29th through November 12th, 2012, for the annual Band Boosters Craft Show. So those are our consent agenda items, and I'd honor a motion at this point.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Chris, could you please give us a roll call? By the way, any discussion on these? Thinking not, hearing not, could you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. No proclamations tonight. We do have a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing at this point. It's a public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution to approve ordinance number 2012-11, which is an ordinance vacating a portion of Weber Street and reserving a utility easement in favor of the city of Cadillac. Marcus, could you just kick this off with a little background for the public, then I'll turn it over to anyone who wishes to speak from the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This item has previously been discussed publicly with respect to potential redevelopment opportunity between a car dealership currently located on site and the formerly occupied CWTA facility to the north. At this time, however, the final sale agreement between the two parties has not yet been executed. It would still be appropriate to host the public hearing this evening as it's been noticed and so forth accordingly. However, with respect to asking the council to reconsider adoption of the ordinance vacating Weber Street, it would not be appropriate at this time for council to take action on that part, rather simply host the public hearing to see if there's any public input and then not take any further action. If and when the parties should come to some form of consensus and provide us with some verification that a sale agreement has gone through or is in the process of going through, we will certainly bring this back for the city council to reconsider, or reconsider rather, the vacation of Weber Street and then the utility easement accordingly.
Is there a picture we could show the public of Weber? Do we have that with us tonight or not?
I think we do.
Thank you.
Weber Street is located right where you see the little icon that says "Full Screen." There you go. It's crosshatched and shaded in in purple, and it runs east and west to Mitchell Street, which is on the left-hand side of the page.
Okay. And so your recommendation as we proceed with the public hearing tonight, even knowing there's not at least a deal at this point?
Correct. I'm not sure legally, can we not do the public hearing? We did post it.
Yeah, I would just hold the public hearing and then not take any action on it this time.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is that good enough for you, Marcus, as a backdrop? Good for me? Okay, thank you. You're welcome to step forward at this point. This is a public hearing. Again, it's to consider the adoption of a resolution to approve ordinance number 2012-11, which would be an ordinance vacating a portion of Weber Street and reserving a utility easement in favor of the city. So that would just be one block that we're proposing theoretically tonight. So it's open for the public. Anyone wishing to talk about closing a street should please come forward. Weber Street. Seeing and hearing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Turn back over to Mr. Petya. Do you expect us to take any action tonight, or what would you recommend?
I would recommend at this time that no further action be taken. It's certainly within the city council's purview. If you did wish to take action, you could, but I don't believe any action is necessary or warranted at this time. And, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the reason why I say that is only because short of having the sale agreement in place between the two parties that would basically be required for the dealership to adaptively reuse that entire site, there really would be no public benefit for us to vacate the street. There would be the perceived public benefit if, in fact, the development or the redevelopment, rather, of the site were to take place. But given that at this time, any redevelopment that would include Weber Street and then the property to the north, which is the CWTA facility, does not seem to be imminent, it would be, in my opinion, the city's best interest not to proceed with the vacation.
Which party was the initial request from? Was it from the current owners of the building or the...
Which building, I'm sorry?
Well, who actually made the request for the vacation? Was it them together or was it one of the...
I'm going to need to ask Jerry.
Down's on the clock.
Okay, it was through the dealership.
Okay. Anybody else want to weigh in on this from council? Hearing nothing, I'm going to move on through the agenda, Marcus, barring any other remarks or comments, compliments. No communications, no appointments for tonight. We are down to the city manager's report. Mr. Petya?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. The first item on my report is with respect to recognition of Officer Nick Bertram for receiving a Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award. Here tonight is Officer Bertram, I believe members of his family, members of staff, and I'm going to call Captain Wolfisle to come forward, please, and Officer Bertram, if you could also come forward. I would love for the captain to share the story with the city council, members of the public.
Okay. Well, tonight, we want to take a moment to recognize Officer Nick Bertram from our department. Earlier this year, Mothers Against Drunk Driving, the Michigan chapter sent out nomination forms to all the departments, police departments in the state of Michigan, asking that the chiefs or command officers of those departments nominate an officer from their agency if they felt that officer had done an outstanding job in the area of drunken and/or drugged driving arrests. I nominated Officer Bertram for that because Nick had 35 drunk or drug driving arrests last year, which is a high number, and it was actually over a third of all of the drunk driving arrests we made department-wide. We received a letter back from Mothers Against Drunk Drivers of Michigan that Nick had been chosen to be one of 95 officers that would be recognized at their annual Lifesavers Law Enforcement Event that they do once a year down in Troy. The committee that picks those officers is a committee made up of a member of the Prosecutor's Association of Michigan, a member from Mothers Against Drunk Drivers, a member of the legislature, and then a member from Michigan State Police Traffic Services. So I escorted Officer Bertram down to the Lifesavers Luncheon Event where he was recognized for his outstanding efforts in this area, and I was surprised to find out that his number was still in the top third of those 95 officers that were recognized. And those are officers that come from departments that are smaller than ours and departments that are much larger. So his number stood pretty tall down there. We were really proud of that. And so this is why, the certificate that Nick was presented that day at that luncheon, and I just wanted to take a moment to recognize him here at home for his outstanding effort in the area of drunk driving arrests and thank him for helping keep our streets a safer place to drive. So Nick, thank you.
Congratulations. On behalf of the city council, we'd like to congratulate Nick as well. Good job and thanks for keeping our streets safe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. One of the primary reasons for bringing Officer Bertram forward today was really to share publicly, especially the stat that Captain Wolfisle mentioned about he was still within the top third statewide where you're being measured against, you know, cities far and wide with many more folks, you know, population-wise and activity-wise than what Cadillac has. And so it really is a big accomplishment, I think, is his numbers.
All right. And his family got to enjoy the celebration as well?
Yes.
Great. Okay, thanks again. Keep it rolling.
The next item, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, are bids and recommendations for the purchase of a patrol vehicle. There is a council communication that was handed out earlier this evening. Some additional information was required in order for us to make the recommendation. We needed to make sure that we were looking at an apples-to-apples comparison between the three dealerships that provided us with bids, and based upon the specification that we requested, some of the information that we had received did not include all of the specs that we desired. And so we were able to clarify that and then put the communication in front of you this afternoon. The recommendation at this time is to go with Gorno Ford of Woodhaven, Michigan, in the amount of $24,569 for the purchase of a police patrol vehicle. Funds are available in the police department for this purchase, and applying the local preference ordinance even still to the bids that were received, Gorno Ford still is the lowest bid amount. So I'm not sure of Owen, if I missed anything on that?
That was a good explanation, yeah. And it was, the specs were required in the bid. There was just a small supplemental page in the back that a couple of them added all of them but this small little supplemental page. So we just simply called and said, what would it be for all these required specs? So just a little clarification to make sure we are comparing bids appropriately.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of a police patrol vehicle from Gorno Ford of Woodhaven, Michigan, in the amount of $24,569.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There is any discussion about the purchase? Looks like the other one was, even without the extras, it was still the lowest bid as it came through, under the same percentages.
That you applied the, or tried to apply the local procedure to this.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Chris, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Go ahead, Marcus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Our next item is a continuation of the public safety discussion. And in continuation of the prior discussions, I have compiled some additional information that was part of the public packet, part of the council packet that you have before you this evening. Also, Dan Moriarty, who had publicly spoken to the city council back, I want to say it was in March of this year, is here again this evening, wanting to reiterate some of the key points he had highlighted earlier this spring. And Dan, if you wanted to step forward?
Good evening, Dan Moriarty, 354 Marble Street. I'm also Civil Service Commission for Police and Fire. I was part of the public safety team that we met for almost a year coming up with the recommendations. I was here March 19th, 2012, before city council. I'm just going to make the part of it brief there. From the reports that we had from Plant Moran, we came up with our ideas from the committee members, and we had two concepts. The ideal structure would to include two chiefs and a hybrid fire marshal that would also be responsible for conducting primarily condemnation-related building inspections. And then the best available structure option included an intern public safety director, the hybrid fire marshal, and maintains and administrative fire captain, and that title could change. Those are the two recommendations that we did make. The millage did fail on the two-chief system. So that puts us back to the best structure available to include the intern public safety director, the hybrid fire marshal, and maintains and administrative fire captain. And again, that title could change. Both the fire and city departments have been working since we have not had a public safety director. Both teams are shorthanded right now and have not had a lot of times to do things administrative information. Some of the other things is, for instance, the police department, the Cali information that is commissioned on excederation for the law enforcement agencies. They have not been able to do that because of being shorthanded right now. I think a neat thing on that, we were one of 10 departments in the state to accomplish that. So for Cadillac, Michigan, that's great right there. By going with the intern public safety director, it's not going to be an easy hire to do somebody by the time you post the job for the candidate. By the time you do the interviews, background check, I'm sure there's going to be tests with civil service, it's going to take a while so we can get our system implant for the time being and then move ahead on there. Both police and fire are very shorthanded right now. It'd be nice to get them up to snuff right now. Councilman Spelman and Mayor Barnett, you were part of this study and it was unanimously what we voted, and I would like to hopefully see from a personal standpoint this go through. I think the citizens of Cadillac deserve the best coverage that they can get. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to kind of reiterate, you know, why we're here this evening. When we started the process quite some time ago, we chose consciously to go forward with the public safety review team, which essentially is a committee that we put in place. We had several public meetings and discussions and then some updates with the council, publicly as well, along with the one that was made last spring with respect to the outcome of the study report and the committee's recommendations. I wanted to keep this process public versus just simply handling the operational changes internally and out of the public light, because I feel that it is important that the city council, whether the city council chooses to accept, you know, any of the recommendations or not, what's important is the process that we followed to bring us to where we are today. And I apologize for rambling, but I wanted to make sure that we kept it public and that even at this point in time, before moving forward to implementation of either the recommendations or something else, that again, it's done completely, you know, above board and with everyone knowing what the next steps are. At this time, really, the discussion would be back to the city council. There's a variety of information, including a couple of reports called attic lances. The police department put one together as well as the fire department that indicates activity levels over the course of the last fiscal year. Additionally, there are reports that will say, like Cadillac Police Department on the top left, these are state-generated reports that we had received called Uniform Crime Report. This is where we receive, or rather, obtain data that's then used in the Cadillac reports that goes up basically on a bi-weekly basis. Again, we wanted to try to give you as complete a picture as possible. But at this time, really, the discussion would be back to city council with respect to me trying to get to a degree, one degree or another, a sense of consensus from the board as far as how you'd like to move forward, so.
Okay. Marcus, before we do that, would you mind, Mr. Councilmember Malama was asking last time about the details and wanted to review the Plant Moran report itself. Could you, there are two recommendations that came out of that report. Would you mind covering those for the public so they can hear what our consultants figured out after $30,000 of studying our city?
Sure. Well, Plant Moran, in their report, came up with a couple of different ways of essentially restructuring. One way, which was simply to not change anything. Another way was to put in place two chiefs, but in doing so to essentially eliminate a command-type position in each department. And then a third recommendation was a public safety model in which you would also recategorize the two senior positions in each department to deputy directors. Not entirely sure, other than a name change, what that would affect, what effect, or in fact, that would make with respect to providing services. But that was how they had indicated the structure.
Were there savings on each one of those?
There was savings, I know, with respect to the two-chief system that they had recommended. Again, it was being done so through eliminating a couple of positions within each department. Thereby, you'd see, you'd realize some savings. I don't recall off the top of my head whether or not there were savings shown in the way that they had restructured the director system by having the two directors, but there may have been as well. Part of the key discussions that had taken place with the public safety team and with my staff as well as with myself is trying to provide, at a minimum, the same level of service that we're currently providing today and able to provide today, and looking ahead and looking down the road, and trying to see if there were some other ways or mechanisms in which to find new efficiencies or some savings. We felt somewhat strongly that if moving into the two-chief system resulted in the loss of positions, that it would really be a step backwards from where we are now, even if we had positions that were quote-unquote "called chief." If we were able to move into the two-chief system and keep things stable without losing the positions, that would be a much more preferred model, which was eventually what morphed into the ideal structure concept, where we would need to see some, either new revenues coming in, such as through a new millage, or some other sign that our revenues are increasing some other way in order to be able to afford it. The other alternative, which was, I think we coined it as the best available structure, essentially was going back into a director, a director's structure for an interim period of time until such time that we had the revenues from one source or another to be able to fund the two-chief system. I think it's important to state that the two-chief system or the two-chief structure was certainly something that everybody, staff and team members alike, were in favor of moving forward with. I don't think there was anyone that was against that concept. The only comments that I can recall that were contrary to that was with respect to if it meant the loss of positions in either department, that they would rather just kind of hold things where they're at before moving down that road.
So basically, the Plant Moran study for the two-chief system would have saved us $30,000 under their strict structure that they had felt was best for us? And then the public safety director under their changes, how much did that save or was it?
I don't have that right in front of me at this time. I could look to see...
The way they wrote it was a $21,000 increase.
Oh, it was an increase? Okay.
Under option one.
And you took that information, worked with staff on that, and you indicated it morphed somewhat, and you talked about the other, the other one, I assume, the two-chief system became $120,000, and that was part of our millage request?
Yes.
But that wasn't Plant Moran's work? That was their work plus our input after looking at the big picture and staff and yourself?
Yes.
And the other public safety director under Plant Moran cost a twenty-some thousand increase? What is the increase or decrease for the morphed version of having a public safety director?
The version that, or what I called our Plan B, what we're talking about tonight, is actually budget-neutral. There would not be an increase in costs.
Okay. But the bottom line was, the study found that, and I guess our staff and you agree, that a two-chief system is what we should have?
We would definitely like to have. And I use the word "like" and I smile when I say that because there are, whether it's about this or some other things, certainly things that we'd like to have and things that we need to have. And I would argue that, in a polite manner, of course, this is something that we would definitely like to have, but if it results in the loss of positions, which we then believe would directly result and impact the loss of ability to provide services to the community, then we would prefer to just put that on hold at this point and try to continue to sustain what we have.
Other than the gentleman that spoke tonight, what other public input have we had from the citizens or voters or residents?
The consultants interviewed, I want to say approximately 40 to 50 different stakeholders through a variety of different sectors, from commercial, retail, industrial, manufacturing, schools, YMCA, elected officials, other government agencies were part of that process. We did have the meetings public. We actually had like an open house in which I believe Mr. Yonkman, who I think I see sitting in the gallery this evening, was the only member of the public, not even a Cadillac resident, but yet a member of the public that attended the open house, aside from Mr. Charmley from the newspaper. But we did do as much reach out as we could. We did not send a direct mail, but we did advertise, obviously, accordingly, about all the public opportunities.
So I'm sure there's people at home wondering if we want a two-chief system and it could save us $30,000. There's a reason, and I know you've said it in a roundabout way a couple of times, but could you explain why we're not going with that?
Sure, sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the director... Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the direct answer is because the savings arrived at the two-chief structure, as indicated in the report that we have, arrives at that savings by eliminating other officers within the police and fire departments. The concern that the committee and staff had in analyzing that particular structure and in the way that it arrived there was that it would actually reduce or diminish the ability for our departments to provide services to our community, which actually goes beyond our borders. As you know, we go on mutual fire calls with surrounding townships, and we actually are the fire department for Clam Lake. Further, we believe that all of the information received from the stakeholder interviews and from what the consultant had to say was certainly important and that we would love to be a two-chief city. But in order to get there, we just need to see or feel, rather, more of the economic recovery that's starting to happen here locally before we could really warrant that recommendation and going there from a structural basis. The concern is that it would create a lot of financial instability if we were to just jump into that right now at this juncture. Keeping everything, keeping all of the, I'll preface that by saying by keeping everything flat, by keeping everything even, if we were going to just jump into that now and not reduce the personnel, it wouldn't be affordable.
How did Plant Moran justify that? This will be my last question.
Sure.
Having us save $30,000 if it was going to decrease our services?
They, you know, they had, they had some discussion with the committee on that and with the staff on that. You know, I certainly don't want to put words in the mouth of the principal that was involved with the study. He had indicated that perhaps the fire chief could take on the responsibilities of the fire marshal. Excuse me. At the time that he'd indicated that, I don't necessarily know if you'd realize that we also don't have our own internal buildings department. A lot of the responsibilities that currently we had a person doing with respect to condemnation-related code enforcement is now no longer being done. The buildings department that services the city is now Wexford County, and it's, the county is not legally required to perform those types of services for us. And so, right now, those duties already are falling behind. They are getting picked up from time to time through our rental inspection program that's administered through the fire department as well as through community development and some other code enforcement initiatives that we take, but we're really starting to fall behind on those types of inspections. And so, the fire marshal really is a key position, and the concern is that if we had just simply merged those responsibilities with the fire chief, that you really wouldn't have a chief that would be there available to provide, you know, strong leadership to the department. Really, the chief could, would more or less become a fire inspector and building official. And we would have issues moving forward in the management, which we were trying to avoid. Similarly, on the police side, I believe the recommendation was to eliminate the captain's position and to a degree what Mr. Moriarty was trying to explain with respect to CLEA, which is, I believe it's an acronym it seems for Certified Law Enforcement Agency. We would be creating an issue where you'd have one administrator that would be in charge of not only providing leadership to the department and overseeing, you know, the operations of the department, but also being the only person really there to provide all of the administrative support function as well. We had talked about the advent of looking at, bringing in like an administrative assistant to the chiefs or something to that effect, but that really then starts to chip away at also some of the savings as well. And, you know, it would be a civilian position. It would not be a sworn officer in either police or fire. And we believed after, after really looking through the report and looking at what it would perhaps result in, that it would be a step back from where we are currently versus at least maintaining where we are currently or trying to enhance our current ability of providing services. So, really, that kind of summarizes where things are at as far as today's discussion goes. We're at a point where, you know, we're looking forward at essentially implementing the Plan B. Again, certainly, if it's the consensus between members of city council that, you know, not implementing the Plan B at this time is what you think is in the best interest of the city, we'll certainly support that. It's our job to do. You know, we're here to implement the policy of the city council, so it's-
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just lost the seat.
I just wanted to mention a couple of things. First of all, I was involved with a millage, and I, way before we even decided to go for a millage, I believe in a two-chief system. I've been around business long enough that I know the flatter you can keep an organization, the better off you are. When you add another level, it just makes communications more difficult. I've also monitored through communications and just walking around, talking with people on how this last year has gone. And it's gone rather, it's gone smoothly, and I'm getting a pretty good feeling on that. I wish going into that millage, I had the information that was presented to me today. I probably would have made even a stronger case to the newspaper to get this information out so that people could be informed. And I've always believed in our staff, what our police department does, and what our fire department does. Big advocates of both of them. They're very positive about a fire marshal. I know how important that is from a manufacturer's standpoint to have that information. I spent a great deal of time looking through the study. There's a lot of excellent information there. I, once again, it reinforced some things, opened my eyes in other areas. I believe that a fire marshal is needed. I believe in what you had said. Our city manager, Mr. Petcha, has said that that fire marshal could also share some other duties. And I didn't just listen to Mr. Petcha, I did check some of those things out. My feeling is, is that I would like to stay the course where we are. This is my personal opinion. I'd like to stay the course for a year, take a look at where we can find additional revenue to try to shore up some areas, especially in the, in the police department. I'm well aware that they are short-staffed. I certainly wouldn't go along with cutting staff. And I would just be comfortable in going along for another year, get a fire marshal, address any type of bogging down or lack of time to perform your duties because of paper that could be corrected at a very low income, and we would be coming under budget from what we budget. So, that's my feeling. I, once again, I'll say I wish I had all this information, and it's excellent. And it does show what's going on and how our staff is working and the fine job they're doing.
Anyone else?
Well, I'll take a slightly different approach. I think that both the Plant Moran group as well as the Public Safety Committee did an outstanding job of taking a look at what our needs are and making some really good recommendations for improvement. In addition to trying to make a decision tonight on which way we want to direct the city manager to move, one thing that I do hope is that we really take a look at some of the recommendations in the Plant Moran study in terms of reducing overtime and some other staffing issues, because I think that there are some really good recommendations there. But I would like to see us move forward with the recommendations of the committee and move forward with putting an interim public safety director in place and going that route and having someone overseeing the public safety unit for the city and really starting to build the strength back up within those two departments that I think have been really short-staffed over the last, what, 18 to 24 months now.
Anyone else wishing to comment?
Couple of them were questions too, and one of them would be in addition to what Councilmember Spelman asked. Did the Public Safety Committee address, because I too was pretty impressed with, there was quite a few recommendations when you look throughout the entire 18 pages. Quite a few of the pages are discussing recommendations. Was this, was this looked upon by the committee? If so, did they come up with, which recommendations were being planned and being implemented? Or was that not looked at by the committee?
And I'm going to be going off of memory to a certain degree. The way that the report, Councilmembers Stevens and members of the city council, was outlined out is that there would be essentially an overview of a structural option, followed by their findings, then followed by their recommendations. And so, you know, depending upon which structure you'd kind of move into, there would then be, you know, a section of some opportunities or some possibilities for you to look at. I know that there were some, some good discussions, you know, about, you know, the overtime, about some of the SOPs or SOG, standard operating procedures, standard operating guidelines. A lot of it all kind of goes together with respect to just the available amount of people that we have on staff and the time that they have to dedicate to some of that. Part of the issue with respect, however, to the overtime, which is something I believe that was, that was brought out really with, with regard to the fire department, is currently we have a lot of paid-on-call folks that we use when we have bigger scenes or some staffing gaps. But with respect to the operation of the equipment, there's a lot of training and dollars that are spent in the training for people to know how to operate the vehicles, and those are the folks that we have to have on scene. And I believe that one of the recommendations was to try to have a paid-on-call person fill in, short of having a full-time firefighter fill in, and there would be a training gap. And so, there would be a significant cost in getting all of those folks up to speed and certified, as well as a time issue. And then there could perhaps also be some labor issues as well, given that we have unionized departments and we have actual, you know, trained firefighters available to be used versus paid-on-call folks that are not trained or certified to operate some of the equipment. They're able to come to the scene, they're able to manage the hose, but really, that's about to the extent of what their training would provide, so. I'm not sure, Randy, if you wanted to opine on that. Did I summarize that appropriately?
Yeah, you did. Good on the head there. You know, it takes a lot of special training to do what we do, the vehicles and drivers' training and all that, so it's the stuff that they don't have.
Then there was one question, and it-
Good question.
This might have been explained 25 times, but-
That's okay.
But to make it in simplicity, to get, part of the Moran study showed the Cadillac current organizational structure.
Mm-hmm.
And then I was looking at the one that is being called the best available structure.
Okay.
And they looked, when I was just looking at them, they looked the same, but I didn't know if, what the, maybe the easiest way is to explain what the difference is.
The primary difference is with respect to the responsibilities of the fire marshal.
He would be added the inspector.
Yes.
Otherwise, position-wise, it's the same as the current.
Correct.
The current structure we had.
Correct.
Except what he calls a, what we call a fire marshal, they call a deputy director. So, that would be a pretty substantially different, you know, at least by title, a pretty substantially different role.
Oh, by the Plant Moran.
Yeah. So, they basically eliminated the fire marshal and added a deputy director under the, under the option one.
Where I was reading that best available one, which sounds like was redesigned, but I know-
Best available, okay.
Yeah. I know it's one you're talking about and saw that the things.
I was going to just simply add, but with respect to the chart of the current look, aside from tweaking the job responsibilities, the chart's not going to change. It's the current structural chart on page five of the study. So, to what you were saying, Art, that you were correcting your focus?
So, we were, I was trying to get an idea. So, your thought is go to and, if we're going back to how it was, but you're thinking an interim position would allow us to structure it? I was thinking there were some changes, but we're kind of going back to the same?
And I, and perhaps it's, it's in the way that I'm communicating interim, and I certainly apologize if I've created any kind of confusion by using that word interim. I see eventually the city working out a way somewhere down the road how to get into a two-chief system. I'm trying to be overly optimistic perhaps, but I'm looking towards, or I'm looking forward towards a time where the revenues are such or the funds are such that we could get into that system without losing jobs to get there. And so, in my mind, although I'm calling it an interim director, perhaps only at this juncture, it would truly be an interim only for Captain Wolfile, who I would look at making the interim director until he retires, which is about a year from this January. But I would then see us having another director come on board that would serve in that function until such time that we could again make the structural shift. One of the things that perhaps I didn't mention tonight, or at least I know I didn't mention it tonight, I think I may have mentioned it sometime in the past, is that the director's position, I would want, we would want to have a certified Michigan police officer being in that role. We certainly also want them to take and have a familiarity with a fire background. And so, the likelihood of the future director down the road also being a police officer is rather good. And so, if at some point in time, whether that's a year from now, two years from now or whatnot, we're able to make that structural shift, it's certainly a possibility that the director, whomever that is, would then test and get into the chief's position. So, that's kind of the, looking at a crystal ball, if you will, down the road. How many, how long that'll be, I, you know, I don't know. And I don't want to mislead anybody to say that this is, you know, just a quick kind of overnight fix. I mean, this might be, you know, a structural solution for some time, but I think the information that we have is certainly clear, the direction from, you know, the people that took the time to even be a part of the process, and certainly the feedback I've received from both of the departments is that they would love to have, they'd love to have chiefs in place. And so, you know, I am going to try to figure out a way of making that happen. I just can't, I just can't recommend that tonight.
How do they feel about a public safety director?
You know, when looking at, again, the alternative of losing staff in either department versus going back into a director structure, the feedback that I had received through this process was that that was, that was more preferred. And so, that's where the, if you will, the Plan B, or the best available structure is, again, we nicknamed it, came from, so.
And your preference is to go with the recommendation of the team, of the committee?
At this time, it is. You know, again, I think trying to digest, you know, where they were at at the time that they made their- they made the recommendation and why. You know, the recommendation was made to try to prevent sliding back. You know, the recommendation was made to try to keep things, at least from a budgetary's perspective, where they are now, versus losing the ability of, or rather not losing the ability, but losing staff, therefore perhaps losing the ability of providing services, therefore negatively impacting the community. And so, they saw going back into a director structure as a way of kinda putting the brakes on, on that from happening if the two-chief system couldn't be implemented at this time. So, that's, that's where I'm at now. And that's essentially the, my recommendation, if you will, to the City Council, which is, you know, if, if there's consensus forming about how to move forward, I would, I would like to basically say upfront, I'd like to keep things where they're at currently and not, and not lose anything that I currently have, and looking at moving forward with, with this plan B, essentially, so.
Isn't it over-optimistic to feel that by the end of a year, we'll have enough money to go to a two-chief system?
I think so. I think it's, I think it is, that's what I was saying.
Overly?
I was, yeah, being overly optimistic. I think that we would likely be in this structure minimally three years, you know, give or take. But it's, it's, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you know, there's outliers that are out there. There's potential development issues, there's the economic recovery, you know, there's news coming out every day out of Lansing through the, through the news wires that we, that we all receive, talking about how, you know, unemployment's going down and Michigan's starting to boom. I mean, I, how that affects our community and the speed of the recovery, and then how we measure that with, with other funding priorities, I couldn't tell you down the road, which is why I don't wanna set anyone's level of expectation up to a point where, where I'm saying, yeah, within a year from now, we'll have the necessary funding to, to make a change. I just don't know. I think that it's more realistic to say it's gonna take longer than that. But what I wanted to try to stress was that this is, in my mind, still somewhat of a, of a temporary solution or a temporary fix. I would like to think that, you know, Cadillac is gonna continue to stay strong in this economic storm that the state is suffering and, and that we're gonna come out looking good. And when that happens, I'd like to say that, that we'll be able to, to make these changes to, to change the structure, so. That was kinda where I was heading with that.
Okay. So, it is, you think overly optimistic in one year that we'll have the money to flip to a two-chief system?
I, I think that's a fair statement.
So, why wouldn't we just put out for our, our applicant, or our announcement that we're hiring a public safety director and, and do what we do? If it's not realistic to raise that money in a year, and we're not gonna have it, then we're not gonna be able to go to that system anyway.
That's a great question, Mr. Mayor, and I can do my best to try to address it. The question of, you know, why don't we just basically, you know, go for broke now, put the ad together and, and get things rolling, try to find, you know, the person that'll, that'll be, be the director for the department? We could certainly do that. I don't, I can't tell you that we can't. What, what I would like to advise is that we do have a career staff member right now with the department, been with us for, you know, over twenty-three-plus years, has publicly advised that he's gonna be retiring in about a, again, about a year from January. I believe he's equipped to help bring both the police and fire departments closer together. He would be able to assist in developing management practices between the two departments, as well as developing, along with the fire department, essentially the, the scope of responsibilities for the job. Going out and finding that, that person, whomever they may be, is gonna take some time. It's gonna take, you know, I would arguably say, you know, at least a month or two to probably get a good description together. You're gonna advertise it at least for another month or two, host interviews. If the person is, is not local, you know, certainly you're gonna provide that person with an opportunity to, to become, you know, a, a Michigan resident or a Cadillac resident. All of that could take time. I mean, it took, I wanna say nearly six to nine months to, to bring me on. And I, and again, I don't know where, where this person might be coming from. It's certainly possible that it might be a local person, but if it's not, you know, I think it's realistic that, you know, it's gonna take time. And having someone that I believe is, is ready to, ready to take on the responsibilities at this juncture would be helpful. Now, we don't have to do that. I mean, we, we could, you know, look at it from the other perspective, and again, by the way, I mentioned, all this would be budget-neutral from wherever we are. We could look at it from the other perspective or other point of shoes, saying, you know, let's keep this, you know, let's keep the ball moving, let's just start immediately putting together the, the, the job ads and the require, you know, the requirements and doing the interview process and all that. And whenever that natural time comes, whether that's, you know, process from beginning to end is over in six months from now or a year from now, when it's over, it's over. And then the new person onboard would be, would be the director, and the, the staff member that's currently here, who would be serving, if you will, in an interim capacity, would, would simply remain at the, at their current rank that they're at now, when the new person comes onboard, if the new person comes onboard before he retires. So, you know, that's, that's an option as well.
Okay.
And certainly a viable one.
If we went to this interim position, that would require us to backfill, we'd hire an employee at the bottom, that would cost us sixty, seventy thousand a year, or up to a hundred actually with benefits, would it not?
Yes and no. You're not, you're not, it's not costing you anything more than what you're already paying today. And so, if, if we had a vacancy within the department, anywhere within the department, there would naturally be an internal working of, of testing and promotions in accordance with the Civil Service Act, which by referendum, the city is a Civil Service Act community, I believe that was voted in in the nineteen-seventies.
Well, we've saved a hundred, almost a hundred and forty thousand since our public safety director left. Why wouldn't we continue to make the same savings that we've made so far? Put this on the status quo, and get a fire marshal, and get a search eventually for a public safety director?
And that's why we're having the discussion tonight, is because before I move ahead with anything, I wanted to see where the council's at.
Would that choice be budget-neutral too? Like, getting a fire marshal? Wouldn't, would you need to hire somebody for, for that?
Yes, in that position.
So, we're going to have to hire somebody?
But that's in the budget.
It's already, it's in the budget, just like everything else.
That person retired, actually, or actually went to a new job, and that's been open for how long? Six months?
Uh, probably closer to a year at this point, actually.
Has that savings been factored into the savings that we're speaking of?
Yes.
Okay. So, then the cost of that, if we were to subtract that from the savings, it would be considerably less?
Savings have been a hundred and seventy-five thousand total, forty thousand for the fire marshal, a hundred and thirty-five approximately for the public safety director, so it wasn't factored in, but-
How much for the fire marshal?
Forty thousand has been saved so far, although there's work that we're behind on at this point.
And?
And the other side, if I could just interrupt, the other side, to me, we have the sheriff department at our, at our access, and we're paying two-hundred-and-twenty-such-thousand for his service, and have received next to none for, with regard to road patrol. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, I don't think this is, I don't think this is the same issue. I'm, I'm hearing the, we have, we have this committee, this team that's met for how long? A year, almost?
Mm-hmm.
And have looked at everything. They make a recommendation. We have our city manager, who is right on the inside seeing operations, also very concerned with the budget, obviously. And the recommendation is to move forward with this. Officer, or Wolfile, this is not a salary increase for him, am I correct?
Correct.
This is just a title shift, and it will give him duties to help bring these departments together, allowing for more efficiency, is, am I correct?
Oh, yes.
And for less overtime and that, and the difficulty with training, am I correct about that too? So, I'm thinking, why wouldn't we do this now? Why wait when it's costing us to not do it, when we have volunteers on a committee, when we have the people in the departments themselves agreeing with this, and staff thinking this is the best thing? I cannot imagine, you know, the, I, I think it-
Trying to just organize my own thoughts and taking into consideration everything that members of the council have said, there's really a few options. You know, one is we do nothing. You know, two is we do something, and are we, you know, filling, you know, or are we creating the director, or are we not? Are we filling the marshal position, which is currently vacant, or are we not? And then three is really more or less a two-way. If we're gonna do two, and we're gonna go back to the director structure. Question is, do we move forward today with people that we already have on staff and moving into that structure? And then we, you know, I was kinda guesstimating, if you will, what, how long it would take to bring someone on if, the, the to-be part to that is, we just simply say, you know what, we're gonna move forward, you know, we're gonna have, you know, an interim, literally just for an interim period of time, but we're gonna start tomorrow in looking for the permanent, you know, for the permanent director. I still think that that process in and of itself could take, you know, six to twelve months from beginning to actually having, you know, someone onboard. And so, you know, the question of, you know, of the savings that we're currently realizing today is then sort of the, the cherry or the whipped cream on top of the big sundae that we've made, you know, we'll continue to be saving during this entire process until such time that positions start to get refilled. So, you know, even if the council says, you know what, Marcus, let's, let's move forward, you know, just start, start that process to find that director, start the process to put in the, you know, the new, the new fire marshal, you know, all that's gonna take time. It's gonna take, you know, it could take several months before I have a, a marshal onboard. I know it's gonna take several months, perhaps even a year, before I have a director onboard. You know, so you're gonna see some savings during that period of time with respect to the, the police department and the, the backfilling and all the internal promotions. Again, as I mentioned, we're a Civil Service Act community, there is a prescription for how to move forward with all of that, and all of that in and of itself takes time. You know, there's, I, I know there's written tests, I believe there might be physical tests as well, there's interviews, you know, that make up, you know, the candidate pool. So, it's, doesn't happen overnight. I mean, it, it happens over time. And so, I guess to one degree or another, you know, you, the city is still gonna see some savings. Granted, they'll start to dwindle down, but you, there still will be some savings over the better part of likely, you know, the next six to twelve months combined between police and fire before we're back up to, you know, I guess what I would call our, our full, our full complement of staff at, at the reduced level that we're already at, so.
I, I can, there's another, I think there's another reason to consider someone who's already on staff as an interim public state, public safety director. And that is that when we start advertising and get somebody from outside somewhere, most likely, if we're moving into this system, we could use the expertise and experience of our, our staff member, someone who's already doing this job, who has an excellent rapport with both departments, who understands the city, has a good rapport with, you know, the needs of the city for so many years being in this, to help put these systems into place so that as someone from outside of the city comes in, these systems are in place, they're custom-designed for our city, with somebody with the experience there. I've seen, I've been in, in organizations where, when somebody comes in from the outside, if the, it takes, there's a, there's a very steep learning curve to understand the culture, to develop a rapport with the departments, and those kind of things, as you're putting, as you're applying systems and putting things in, become a hindrance. If you can come in and the systems are already there and develop that rapport, and develop those, those relationships to make it be most effective, I think that's the biggest bang for the buck. Because at that point, that person can come in and be most efficient, focusing on the relationship side while the systems are there. For that reason, I would like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the committee and direct Mr. Petcha to move forward with implementing an interim public safety director, and move forward with pursuing the development of the departments in accordance with that.
Okay, there is a motion. Is there going to be a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. I served on that committee, I probably have the closest view here other than Sherri. I think I maybe made one or two more meetings than she did for her schedule, but we both did participate. What I've been hearing from the public is that on the side here, away from the committee, would be that they wanna save money, they wanna be safe, but they'd like to save money. We're saving money by going forward with the status quo. Also, the public wants, the sheriff department, we pay for as city residents to start serving our city like they do the townships.
If we don't, if we keep things the way that, if we implement a public safety director, does that exclude considering pursuing, getting services from the sheriff's department, Mr. Petcha?
No.
Oh, okay. So, that could still continue and with an interim public safety director?
What's that gonna do is move our, one of our employees up theoretically, also someone would move up to captain. We'd pay at least sixty to a hundred thousand dollars more per year for an officer that should be covered for by the sheriff department, who has our two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars for this year and every year, a million and a half, almost, one-point-three million over the next six years.
I know. That, that would be the ideal thing, but, you know, there's the story about the bell for the cat, where the mice all get together and say, the way that we can, we can stop this cat from eating us is to put a bell on its collar.
I don't have a mice story, but I could say this, that there will be a change at Lexington County in January. And that door is still open. As the sheriff has said, it's up to the commissioners. And I don't feel that, you know, because I've been turned down once, so that doesn't faze me. I'm willing to go back again. But I think there's, I think that there's more discussion that can take place, and I do believe the system is working as it, as it, it's very smooth right at this point. I do see a problem in the fire inspector. I do see a problem in that area. And as far as the police, I, I know there has been. I talked about that during the millage, and, and that's where I think we need to center. And revenue is, the state is picking up, and I think we have a good system in place right now.
Anyone else wishing to talk? We do have a motion on the table.
Two, two questions. The first one is, and I think that was part of the confusion was, and I, Dan might have mentioned this, and I apologize if you did. I was going off of the minutes from the public safety, and I wanted to make sure, we're going off the recommendation, which is to move forward with the best available structure, which I thought would just be moving forward without an interim. But I'm trying to figure that out, if that was an additional thing, or if that was part of the, 'cause I'm looking at their, their motion at their meeting, and they were saying to go with the best available structure, or go with the ideal structure if the millage, for the millage, and that didn't pass. So, I guess that was question number one. Question number two, which is, is really confusing me now, is, some of us have been getting hammered for micromanaging. We've been told for months that this really isn't, other than input, this is not our decision, and now I'm questioning, we're, now we're doing a motion, which even on the packets is saying, no, I didn't realize we were even doing a motion, it says no council action required. So, I'm just curious if this is in our, our- So I'm just curious if this is in our role. I do know budget times, we do have that opportunity, but are we out of our authority as a council right now by doing this? No matter which way we go.
It certainly is up to the city manager, as everybody has articulated this meeting and the last, but he, he wants the support of council.
Okay, the best available structure is hiring a public safety director, according to Plant Moran, which was the report we received, as well as the MORF study or MORF agreement, so to speak, that came to us along with the study.
To put a public safety director in place, and I think that the committee has determined the best thing to do is to put Captain Wolfisle in that interim role.
That's what I want, and I'm not saying by name, but did they say they wanted an interim, or was it just they wanted it?
That's what Dan said when he was up there speaking on behalf of them.
Well, I don't know that he's speaking on behalf of us. We haven't had a meeting in six months. He's helping out tonight, and we appreciate that. But I don't know that our board has met. Our committee met once after the report came back, and we were also met with a MORF version that was significantly different than Plant Moran's. I don't know that we've met since then that I know of. But I do appreciate his history. Is there something in the minutes we can point to to show art, or his questions?
Yeah, I was going to mention, the last page of the minutes, I believe the minutes are about five pages long, but they are double-sided. One, two, so it's really on the back of page three. It talks about the next steps, and it simply says, it was motioned by Moriarty and supported by Langton to support the best available structure option and include the public safety team to move forward to develop potential millage language to support the ideal structure for the August election and bring the team's recommendation to council. That was basically the Plan A and the Plan B. The best available structure option is the Plan B. That's with the public, with the public safety director, which again, we were using the word interim only because it was, you know, in my understanding, it was never anyone's desire to have that position as a permanent fix. But again, you know, interim, you know, we're still looking at a several-year window. The, the ideal option again was the, was the two chief option. So, you know, that was, that was what had come out of the, that had come out of the committee. And Councilmember Stevens, I think your second question with respect to, you know, what, what's necessary for council tonight, there really, there, there isn't a distinct need for council to take or make a formal motion. Certainly, again, it's within council's purview to do so if you wish. As I had stated, I wanted, you know, as this whole conversation started when it did publicly, keeping up the whole public end of this, I wanted to make sure that before moving forward, I kind of know where everyone's at. But again, it's, it does not require by motion, or it could be done by motion. Either way, you know, city council is, you know, in control of the, of the annual operating budget. And so I, as I mentioned before, I want to make sure that whatever we do, you know, operationally is with, with support of council, so.
I guess I have a question, because our minutes that we just discussed indicate that we are going to include the public safety team to move forward to develop the potential millage language to support the ideal structure for the August election and bring the team's recommendation to city council. That didn't happen. Marcus, do you know why that didn't happen?
Well, actually, the, Mr. Moriarty came in March to city council with the, with the direction from the public safety team that had suggested that we move forward with the Plan A, and it advocated the position of the millage language. The millage language itself was actually put together then by the city attorney accordingly.
I'll bet back then in March, we didn't have the information you have tonight, which is telling us two to three years is really what this is, and it's not an interim position, it's a permanent position. And that may have, probably would have changed our committee's ruling at that point, don't you believe? Wouldn't it make sense, seeing that the situation is more bleak in the future, to send it back to that committee to have a second look and to let them weigh into what we're trying to...
We certainly can, but what we did talk about back in March was needing to have at least a couple of consecutive years of positive economic growth. And so, you know, we were probably looking at a shorter window, maybe not a three to five-year window, but at least a two-year window. We talked about, and I think it may have been the finance director talking about the property values kind of sliding now for a few years in a row, and that we would want to see at least a couple of years of consecutive property value growth as a, as a strong indicator that we're in a, in a good recovery mode in order to then advocate the position back to, back to a two-chief structure.
What's interesting for me, because this is the first time in this packet we saw these minute meetings, and I remember when, trying to ask when we were talking about the millage. Somehow it got deemed that it was Mr. Melama and my millage. And we kept saying, is the committee for it? And we were kind of told yes, and then after, I probably had a majority of the, the committee say that they were not supportive of that millage. So it, that's what's confusing to me, because we got hammered pretty good, that this was our millage and we were causing problems with the county and everything else. And so I, then I'm confused now as to if this is the objective of the, so they want to have a best available structure, they don't want to just go forward with that and hire somebody, they want to have an interim for two or three years, and then, look.
Well, it was, it was basically a Plan A and a Plan B. The Plan A was to move forward with a two-chief system if there were additional revenues available to do so.
Right.
And if it wasn't through just the general, you know, general property taxes, then having a new millage or a new revenue source in place would be an alternative option, which is what, essentially what they had recommended, was to try to seek a millage for the purposes of providing funding to accommodate the two-chief structure. If, if either that didn't happen, or if the economy didn't pick up, and again, now we're talking about waiting a couple of years, then the Plan B was to move forward with essentially an interim director, so. Until, again, such time that either a new millage was put into place, or there was, there was additional revenues through general property taxes coming forward, so. And again, the, looking back and trying to analyze the psyche of where we're at, it might be difficult, but I think the main issue is trying to prevent a backslide, is trying to prevent losing jobs and positions and having a negative impact on the ability of providing services to the community, and trying to just essentially hold where we're at now, and, and try to continue to sustain, so.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak on this issue from council?
So we're seeing that we, now it's, now all of a sudden we can, we're going to do a vote here, and...
I'm just trying to support our public safety department and the city manager and give some stability to it and, you know, some, some support from the council to move forward with what he's recommending and what the committee's recommending.
I think that is the purpose of, of my motion.
Nothing other than that, and, you know, knowing that we don't have all of the resources that we wish we had, I mean, there's so many different opinions on how we can move forward on it, but, and, you know, you asked a good question, why are we trying to micromanage this? And I don't think any of us want to, and it really is up to the city manager to do it. It would be great if he could get our support on this.
But budget-wise, we do have to go back to our constituents and defend what are, what we decided.
I thought that this was budget-neutral.
Still, in relationship to what we're doing now.
It's costing us, and I'm sure there's a number close to what I said.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to talk on it from council? We've had a good discussion. Mr. Petcha, you deserve the last word.
Not on council. Just wanted to reiterate again that all I'm looking for is some form of consensus from council. It does not necessarily have to come in the form of a motion. If council's uncomfortable in moving forward in that direction, if you are, then that's great. I don't view this as council micromanaging me. As I restated from the beginning, I brought this forward intentionally and publicly, knowing that it would perhaps be controversial, but I did it nonetheless because I wanted to make sure that everyone on council had an opportunity, and the community had an opportunity to talk about these two very important departments publicly.
I just, it's been strange getting such a mixed, I get, getting a lot of mixed messages from those, and that's why I keep asking the question on that committee as to hearing different responses, and just want to make sure I'm really in a confused state with that right now.
Was that our last committee meeting, Marcus, if you recall?
Yes.
Was in March?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? I did give some leeway there. Anyone else wishing to chime in? Hearing no other, we do have a motion on the table, and would you like to proceed forward with that, Councilmember Shippers?
I would. I would like to.
All right. Chris?
Councilmember Melama?
No.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
No.
Mayor Barnett?
No.
Motion does not carry. And consensus moving forward, is there one, or, or not?
If I can give it a shot at looking at summarizing, and perhaps I'm partially off-base, but I'm going to wing it anyways. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what I believe I'm hearing partially is that we should look at moving forward now with an interim, and also moving forward now, from what you had said, Mr. Mayor, with advertising and looking to try to get a full-time person on staff. I'm also hearing that we should perhaps just kind of hold where things are at and only move forward with maybe looking at, filling the, the marshal's position now, and not making any other adds, moves, or changes, but basically just staying where we're at. I would presume that if, if we look at, at just doing that, that I would still commence the process of searching to find a director, that that would also start a, sort of, as a parallel track. I wouldn't necessarily make any changes now to have an interim director, but I would still start the process to, to fill that, to fill that position. That's kind of what I'm hearing. I apologize if, if I'm not saying it as clearly as I think you guys are thinking, but...
I'm for the status quo, which would not be an interim, and getting the fire marshal to help out, and a search at some speed that's appropriate for the public safety director, which looks the way that we're heading on a permanent basis until further notice from the economy and/or the county commissioners.
Right.
Or other possible...
Which actually is the Plan B.
That's where I am, Marcus, in case you have misinterpreted my, or you were mixing and matching, which makes sense too at this point.
The interim director plan, or the, the best available option, was really sort of silent with respect to where to go during the interim basis, or the, or basis, basis, or this gap between where we are today versus where we'll be once we have a director onboard, meaning that it didn't say, well, we should do what I was advocating earlier about moving someone into that position on a temporary basis before we have the full-time person on. And so, but that would still be the, the Plan B approach.
Would it make sense to just send it back to the committee that hasn't met since March, that could look at fresh numbers and the election results, and, because I think we were shooting in the dark a little bit there with some uncertainties? And we never followed through with the committee's work, which was to promote this thing, or at least get the facts out to council and the public presumably at meetings.
The, the, the one part to that, Mr. Mayor, was with respect to the development of the millage language, which again, we used Foster-Swift to, to put together. But we did have the spokesperson, Mr. Moriarty, come forward and talk about, you know, talk about the, the direction. Yeah, I'm not sure if any of the numbers really have changed. You know, I still think that moving forward in the direction that you had mentioned is, is what the committee had said. You know, the committee said, if Plan A doesn't work, we have a Plan B. And, and all that I was trying to throw out there was, in the interim, before the, before we have a, a full-time person onboard, we would utilize some staff on hand. But again, I think we could, we can certainly move forward with that, with that Plan B, keep things, the status quo is to where they're at until such time that we have a person onboard, short of bringing the, the marshal on, so.
I was also wondering, I know our, our financial director is not into weather forecasting, and that's not necessarily a talent of, of people in accounting, but I'm wondering if you could just kind of project what things would have to change for us to be able to secure a two-chief system? Just, this would have to, this would have to, that type of thing, different examples. Is that possible?
Off the cuff right now, or just kind of simply develop some numbers?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly look at some scenarios and...
Yeah, that's what I'm...
And projections. You know, you're talking...
Yeah.
Several percent of our taxable value, you know, things like that would, would raise that...
But not right now. I mean, I want you to spend a little time on it.
Yeah.
At least look in your crystal ball.
Can do, yes.
Isn't the interim public safety director position just, wasn't that just going to be a temporary? Even if we hired somebody new, we would be telling that individual that it's highly likely when things improve here, you're not going to be the public safety director, you're just going to become the police chief or fire chief, depending on what...
Yes.
So interim didn't really mean our employees, did it? It could, it could have meant hiring somebody on an interim basis, at least from the committee's discussions. Isn't that possible?
Oh, sure.
That's how it was treated? I think that's how I was thinking about it at the, at the level, at the committee level, is that what, our goal is to have a two-chief system? We've needed that since, well, 2003, according to a fire study, but fire department study. My understanding is we're going to hire somebody telling that person, we're not going to keep this position for long, and if you're, if you accept it, you need to recognize that you could become the police chief, because if we get enough money to implement the MORF version of Plan B, that person was not going to stay. And it really didn't matter if that was a person from in-house or from outside, it was still going to be interim. Isn't that the way it was laid out?
Uh, yes. And then there, there was just some additional discussion about timing with respect to if there was going to be a, a request for a special millage. You know, when, when would that be? Would we look at making that move before, you know, the millage request was put out to the, to the citizens to vote on, or after? And then additionally, as I had mentioned during those, during the last committee meeting, about, I do have a member of staff that I felt that could move into the role now, in that interim basis, until such time that we had, well, I guess either one of two things, until such time that, that he retires in approximately a year from January, and/or we have whomever the, the new person is onboard. And as I mentioned a little bit earlier this evening, going through that process of bringing that person onboard is going to, is going to take some time. It's not, it's not necessarily a quick fix. And so, forgive me, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, if I'm oversimplifying it in my own mind, I really do kind of see it, if you will, as, as a couple of options. You know, one is we do nothing. You know, two is we do something, and if we're doing something, are we simply just filling the, the marshal position, or are we going to, excuse me, filling the marshal position and also having an interim? Or are we just simply going to fill the marshal position and then not have an interim, but just start the process immediately to find this full-time person that would be in that role until such time that we're able to break it out into a two-chief system? So, all of which I see meet the spirit of what, you know, of what the committee's recommendation was moving forward. And that's where I'm really just looking for some clarification, because again, I would love to have, love to kind of build the consensus... would love to have, love to kind of build the consensus between the group moving forward with this issue.
Okay. What is the consensus of our council?
Considering the fire marshal, it sounds like both of the plans include it. It sounds like the committee was without question on that position.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that was just a position that the person left and we just haven't filled it yet.
Correct.
You could do that, you could have done that four months ago, you could today, you could do it whenever.
I think there sounds to be a consensus, at least to go ahead with the fire marshal. I think everyone's, from the motion, support, and at least, I've heard at least, maybe all of us.
It sounded like there was a savings in the meantime, which put another burden on the fire department, but they, they stepped up and helped us in that area, and the way the budgets have been working, I'm, I'm sure that helped the overall budget, which is, this is a part of the entire budget that we're looking at, and I don't know if everybody's in agreement on the fire...
I think so. Is anyone against Marcus going forward in that regard? He's looking for...
I got it.
Support. Okay, it doesn't look like that's an issue. Is there anything else we can reach consensus on?
Essentially, what, what I would like to be able to do, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, one of two things. One would be either to move forward with either pre-existing staff serving as an interim role sort of on day one, and at that time, we could, again, do one of two things, either have, have him situate in that position until such time that he retires, or, which, and I think I'm, and I apologize for if I'm saying the same thing over and over again, but I think what I'm working out here in my mind here is that he would be in that position, if you will, on day one, but we would also be working on day one in providing everything that's needed in order to get the replacement on board. And so, as I mentioned before, that, that replacement is going, the time it's going to take to get that replacement on board, it's going to take months.
Replacement for what?
The, the director. You know, the, the person that would be serving in that interim director role after we go through and do a national search, it's going to take time to do. And so, there's, basically, that process would also initiate. So the question is, is do I initiate that process while also having an interim person in place, or would you prefer that we just simply keep things as-is, except for the fire marshal position, and then initiate the process to get that person in place immediately as well? Sorry if I sounded a little bit disjointed in that. Basically, what I'm saying, I think, I think you understand. If not, tell me, I'll clarify it. So, so that's, that's kind of where I'm looking for some, some direction on it. And again, you know, I, I brought this forward because all the prior conversations have been public about it. This is certainly something I could have done just operationally in my office, but because the whole process from getting a consultant, even the, even the interviews for the consultant were public and open to the public, I just felt, I felt obligated and it was important enough to keep, keep the conversation in the public realm, so...
Okay. I don't know that I'm in consensus with that, Marcus, but anyone else want to...
If you, if you do that, does it...
I'm sorry, but do what?
If you have somebody start from day one as an interim, does that necessitate promotions and wage increases at all levels?
Yes.
And that's the concern that, that you have?
And if we don't, councilmember, we would essentially be saving for a little while longer while we then still go through the process of bringing in the, the permanent or the quasi-permanent person. I, I shouldn't say they wouldn't be permanent, they would be permanent, certainly they'd have the option of, we'd have to figure out how to work it, but they would have the option of, of also serving after we eventually switch to a different structure. But, but yeah, it would, that would, that process would be delayed with respect to all the inner workings and promotions and everything else on the police side. So I know there was discussion with the city council earlier this evening about saving dollars and trying to extend that for as long as, as we could, that would be one way of doing that.
And you mentioned two things that came up, kind of what you're asking, so then we, let's say in four months, we get a public safety director, now those people, once they're promoted, do they, they can just be demoted, or, because we can't take...
Well, if, and I think, I think I get what you're saying, if in four months, we have a public safety director on board, if the person should come from the outside, then it's not necessarily going to impact any changes from within. If the person that fills that role comes from pre-existing staff, then that would create and necessitate the need to then backfill through the ranks.
But like, maybe I misunderstood, is if we have an interim and then he has to go back down, because we would be filling that spot while there's an interim position?
Correct.
So if he went back, now we're, we're getting to where...
And I apologize if I wasn't that clear earlier in trying to communicate it, unless something changes, as I mentioned before, we're looking at essentially a budget-neutral decision across the board. So even though he would be serving in a higher capacity, it's not going to add any additional dollars to the budget for making that happen. And if at some period during that, during that period of time, we have a new person on board for that role, then, then yes, the captain would go, would go back into the captain's role during that, during the remainder of his career.
That makes sense, but I think what, what councilmember Shipper asked is, we would have to promote to the police captain at that time? If we, if he was moved to the public safety director, and it sounds like he wouldn't be making any additional...
Right, it would, it would be, it would be a budget-neutral position. I would have to look at where the captain is right now compensation-wise and see what gap there may be between where he's at now versus where he would be at a, at a director's position. But again, I would do everything without adding any additional cost into the, into what we've already budgeted for.
But I guess I'm not asking this really good.
Okay, sorry?
He gets shifted up to public safety director. It sounded like then we have a promotion to police captain while he's serving in that interim's position.
I see what you're saying. There, there's, there is absolutely, absolutely a timing issue that we would have to take under consideration. The timing issue would be whether or not we would look at making any of the internal adds, moves, or changes, if you will, perhaps not adds, but the moves and changes while he, he being the captain is still a staff member of the city, or if those changes are, are essentially put on pause until such time that he should separate, or we should have, to be able to make that happen. Because you're right, we're not going to make all the changes and then have a director come on board three months later while he still has seven months left on the...
That was my question.
Seven months left of time, and I'm just pulling numbers out of the air, and then have to go back and make all the changes all over again.
That's how I interpreted the U.S.
So all the promotions would not take place until after the interim?
That would, we would, we would have to, again, do it basically one of two ways. If, if we look at making our current captain the director at this time as an interim, I would have to essentially keep him there for the next 18 months or give or take, I didn't look at the calendar, but a year from January, before I would really make all of the other backfilling changes or bring on someone new. Because if we bring in someone new, then it would have, it would have a ripple effect down in the organization. The alternative is that he wouldn't serve in that interim capacity, basically we would keep the department, departments static and bring someone on, again, as soon as we could. I still think it could take, you know, six months to a year before we have a director on board. And then once the director is on board, we would then obviously work with him, and I would work with him as the city manager, and, and looking at making the necessary changes down the road, so. And again, the, the changes down the road would really be doing what we would normally do in the case of anyone that currently works for us that retires or resigns, so...
Okay, is there a consensus of this council that Marcus is looking for, and if so, what is it?
I think, I think that the, the concern about all of a sudden, everybody being promoted and having to deal with the cost of that has just been clarified, yeah, that, that's not necessarily the...
Okay, let me ask a question if you brought that up. Who's taking over his duties as captain? Not who, but is there, I assume, positions that are going to be jumped up to handle those duties? And how are those people compensated?
The salaries are all set, they're in the budget, and again, it would, we'd have to follow the prescription of the civil service commission and that process for any of the hirings, whether it's for a captain's position or for just a, an entry-level patrol person position.
What you're talking about in the meantime, right?
Like, yeah, before there's, before somebody is hired from, as a more permanent, like, if, 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 if the staff member moves up, does then somebody have to move into that captain's position while...
Or the roles as well?
I'm sorry, or the what?
Or the roles.
Question is if, if, if the staff member moves into the director's position now, would we then move all the other positions accordingly? I would say yes, only if that staff member is going to stay in the director's role until, essentially until he retires, which is indicated will be about a year from January. So if, if that's not the case, then I would not do that. And we, we, it wouldn't make, it wouldn't make good sense to do that. The alternative would be simply to not make that person serving as an interim, rather hold where things are at and start the process immediately to find, to find the, the new director.
I thought there was prior discussion, Marcus, that it was important that we get somebody on board, because we're short one officer, and we get that person on as soon as possible, and this change would play into that. That's one of the reasons why this was promoted as a good idea. I thought that came out earlier in the meeting, and now I hear that there might not be that situation. I'm just curious.
Shorter officer in the police department?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't believe, I'm looking to Owen or Matt, are we down in officer right now? Aside from either chief or director?
No. We're fully staffed, other than...
Okay, so...
...the department head.
Okay, we're fully staffed and still saving $70,000 a year.
And I think I heard, unless I heard it wrong, earlier I think you asked if, in, in the interim time, he would be getting paid the same as he is captain, but he's going to have a bunch of extra responsibilities?
I would need to, I would need to look at where his current compensation is right now versus where the director's compensation would be. There might be some, some change in that. It's likely not going to be very great, because both my acting captains are receiving an administrative increase while they're serving in their acting roles currently, but I can tell you that it, whatever it will or won't be, it'll still be within the current amounts that have been budgeted. I'm not looking at making any changes or budget amendments to, to the departments based on compensation.
Okay, so either way, we'll have an open position, either a captain or an interim, public safety director, wouldn't it make sense just to have a open public safety director interim and leave the captain where he is, and we save money there?
And that was the alternative I had suggested, is to, is to do that, move forward with filling the marshal's position, which again, happened by circumstance during this process, that the current marshal that we had had resigned to take on a different position. And then the alternative would just simply be to start the process, if you will, quote unquote, "today," and finding the director to take over. And then you would thereby be sort of extending the period of time in which you'd realize some savings.
Okay. Well, I think Marcus was looking for consensus, and I don't know that he's getting one, so...
We're getting close, I think.
Okay. Anyone else wish to try to help us reach a consensus?
I think, you know, the city council certainly has been talking about this, you know, ad nauseam this evening. I believe that the city council, that all of you are acting in what you believe is in the, in the community's overall best interests. I believe that every one of you would like to see something happen, and the question is, is to what degree and essentially, you know, on what speed, you know, are we, what RPM are we moving forward on? I can tell you from, from, from my perspective, I certainly would love to be able to, to initiate some process or implementation of some plan, you know, starting tomorrow. Now, what that is, again, I love, I'd love to be able to know that I've got the support of the council. And again, it's not that I don't think I have the support of the council, I think the council is trying to, to really bite off a big chunk of an apple, you know, this evening, you know, without, without simply suggesting that the council continue the discussion at another point in time and thereby withholding, withholding anything. Again, you know, I think we're kind of have two things. We could put aside the fire marshal thing, I have consensus from everyone that that's the way to go in filling that. So really, the question is, is do we, do we move forward, if you will, tomorrow in utilizing a pre-existing person to serve in an acting role for about a year and a, year and a quarter, thereabouts, and then have that replacement with a full-time, new full-time director at that time? Or do we just simply move ahead tomorrow, keeping things to status quo as to where they are right now, not making any, any changes with respect to the leadership of either department, and move ahead immediately with beginning the process of bringing on a director? That's, that's basically how, in my mind, how I've separated it and come up with, with basically two alternatives, so...
The hard part, especially for the public watching, is we have the, we have the, we have the budget time every year, and usually we're not smiling happy about it because it's always tight, and we're being told how tight it is. We're usually looking at, we may have to cut this, and we, by staff saying, we may have to cut this, 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 and that, and I know some of our stuff, we were still looking at, we, we had to give time to find out after the first amendment to this budget, we were going to be finding out some information in terms of what, how our end of the year last year ended, as we were looking at, we even put some things on hold to look at our first quarter of this year. And that's, trying to give the idea that this is an entire picture of what we're dealing, this is one part of our budget, and, and I'm trying to keep all that in mind. You know, we are looking at some budget areas. I think the consensus of this council completely is, we've had a, a very good fire and police department, they've been doing an amazing job. It's obvious they're understaffed, they got a lot of public support, and it's just trying to figure out, you know, of what, what we're hearing all probably personally in terms of, from different angles from the public to the different people within the departments, looking at our full budget. You know, I've been, in the back of my mind, as you remember, I was addressing things from our first quarter, saying we had things from last year's budget, we never really finalized, kind of waiting to see how things were.
Audit's just starting now, so with the next two to three months on?
Yeah, it takes them, I mean, there are field work for a few weeks here, so, start Monday.
So we will have that report?
And whether it's right or wrong, that's in the back of my mind, too, as to some areas that we said we got to hold off on our budget and just see how it comes out.
And is that next quarterly report? Don't we get another report in October?
Yeah, the audit, and that's, the, the, that process is starting as we speak.
When you say the, there's the audit, but then we do the quarterly amendments to the budget, I think, is what...
Is that in October? Is that in October as well, Owen, or is that, I thought that was a little later down?
There's no standard time for those, as we have needed.
But the quarter would be after September.
September 30th, yep.
That might be the time to clarify the other component, after we see those numbers.
Okay, council, let's, we're paddling a little bit here still.
So if, I guess if you're looking, I think maybe, maybe we should take that into consideration, see how the rest of the budget is looking, because I, I think we have to remember those work sessions, it's not as many public there and that, but usually they're, they're a little more, you know, which the staff does an amazing job of staying conservative and within our budgets, but just to see how we are finishing last year and how we're looking for this year, see if there's any other surprises.
Anything else from council? I don't know that we're going to take any action tonight, but I'm open to any other motions or discussion.
Do you have what you need?
No.
Well, at this time, it seems that, there seems to be a sort of, some split opinions with the exception of the fire marshal position. So I, I would feel comfortable in certainly moving forward with that. I would hold on doing anything else, even on starting the process of, of doing a search for a director, only because I don't, I don't quite think council's at a point right now where that would be supported. I can say that, at least from a budgetary perspective, that is the most cost-effective model versus the two chiefs, and so, assuming that the, that the auditor's report is perhaps not much different than, than what it was last year, even though I'm hoping that it'll show some, some signs of a recovery. I don't, I don't expect that it'll be, I don't expect that it'll be such that it would advocate that we can move forward with the, with the two-chief model at this point.
Right, absolutely.
And so I, our recommendation would likely continue to still be to fund the budget accordingly, under a director, a director's structure, without making any other changes to the, to the actual way that we provide that service through the, through the amount of staff that we have. So, but again, I'm not sure if I'm hearing that wrong or not, but it seems like things are kind of split, and so I would feel comfortable in waiting until you had that report, I guess, just to, just to verify the, the hunch, and assuming that, again, the audit report comes back and doesn't really indicate any, anything major, I would say then, then come, which would likely be November, I'm guessing, probably Owen, when the audit's ready, that we would start in November, we would then start to do the, the search for the director at that point, or December, but sometime, you know, as soon as after we get the, the report directed to council, and council has a chance to, to digest it. So it wouldn't happen until fall or winter.
It seems like if we put out a full-blown search for a new public safety director, we're going to end up spending a lot more money than if we put Captain Wallfile in that position on an interim basis until he retires and he has the experience to do. I'm just saying, I think we're missing an opportunity here, just makes a lot of sense to me, but I understand you already voted against that.
Well, and, and again, I'm, perhaps I'm, I'm just simply talking, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as I'm thinking things, but, you know, I'm going to obviously do everything that I can from a manager's perspective to, to, to work with the departments, knowing that, you know, unless, unless the city hits the powerball somehow, we're going to likely end up in that, in that structure, again, eventually, and, and try to still work on some of the, some of the initiatives that I'd like to, to get going between both police and fire departments, so that we, we aren't necessarily losing, losing time, so.
Okay, do you think we've talked about that enough, Mr. Petcher?
I think so.
Okay. It looks like you have one more.
I do. Oh, yes, I do. Water wellfield update. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I had asked Jeff Deetland, utilities director, whom I think is still here, yes, to provide us with some pictures of our current wellfield location, as well as to use this essentially as a segue into planting the seed and starting to talk about phase two. Phase two being, what do we do now? Now that we have our new wellfield essentially operational, we are absolutely, by the way, going to still plan some form of an open house, we want to get the site cleaned up and looking good before we do that, but we need to start talking about phase two, and I think the magic word for tonight is consensus. What I was looking to do is basically get some consensus, even though I think I know where we're already at, moving forward, which would likely be utilizing the drinking water revolving fund for the entire project, which would also include site acquisition. Unlike, for the former process, the fund was not utilized for site acquisition. So in any event, Jeff, if you want to move forward, and do you have the gifts?
Yes, I do.
Oh, good, okay.
I can wait.
By the way, Mike, they're not gifts.
I've got a spot to give them out. I have gifts for council.
They're not gifts. You don't use the G-word.
Well, okay. Anyways, Mayor, city council, I'm here, as Marcus said, to give you an update on our phase one of our wellfield relocation program, and introduce maybe phase two, or see where we want to go for phase two. So I have some pictures, as Marcus said, right away. This is our new service building, if you haven't been out to the site. Our new service building is up, and as Marcus said, we, we really don't want anybody out there yet till we get the grounds keeping a little better, with our landscaping, our, our grass hasn't came in, come in yet, so, we want it nice and pretty before we have our open house. Our control panel in our, in our control area, our, our main office area, as you can see, we have no furniture in there yet, we just, it's, it's really a huge empty building with our control panel against the back wall, but we are, our chlorinators are out there, nice and pretty looking chlorinators to put chlorine in the water. Our pipe gallery, where all of our pipes from our wells come in before it goes out into our system. This is wellhouse number nine, just a shot of wellhouse number nine. I have the nice road going up to wellhouse number 10, which is behind the mayor's house. So that's a, a road going out to wellhouse number 10.
Mother's house.
What, your mother's house? Excuse me.
His mother's house.
Okay, okay. Inside wellhouse number eight, this is our piping and our, our well, over to the right side of this one, and the well in number eight that pumps over a thousand gallons of water per minute out to our system. Phase one, still doing some punchless items. All the wells are now up and online. Still doing some landscaping, that's why we haven't had the open house, we want to make it nice and pretty before we do that. We need, as Marcus said, to schedule an official opening for the council and the public to come out and take a look. And I have, as Marcus said, some gifts here, or I don't know if they're gifts or not, but...
They're samples.
Samples.
I can't take a gift.
Samples, yeah, it could be a misdemeanor. Especially now.
Jeff's getting...
Oh, this is beautiful.
I got one for all of yous.
The weird thing is, you guys, one that says "art" on it.
Yeah, be careful.
Actually, there are different colors, because the storm didn't all have one color, so.
This one's great.
I can see Jeff's article now, council takes gifts.
Do you want one, Marcus?
Sure. Rick, Mike, is there one you need to share?
It's cold, we get to take it right now?
Go ahead.
Is this right from the tip?
This is well number eight and nine, which was running currently out at...
Cheers, cheers to new wellfield.
Cheers to new wealth.
It should be nice and cold, it's been in the old cooler all day, so, there is one in there, Mike, if you want one. Oh, you had one.
Delicious.
That's well number eight and nine that were running when we actually took these samples out at the wellfield. So the citizens of Cadillac have been getting that, that's just the freshest, because it's right from the service building. It has a little bit of chlorine in it, but it hasn't gone anyplace else, so, pumped all the ground into the city council, and I thought you guys would like to know what we've done with the DWRF and what we hope to do in the future. So as you remember from our testing of the water out there, it was at least as good or better on all parameters than our current wellfield. And most of the parameters, almost all of them, they were better than our current wellfield, so, there was a couple that they were the same, but most were better on all parameters, so.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to verify, do you know what the hardness level was by any chance?
I want to say it was ninety last I saw, ninety, and we used to be about one, we used to be about 160 on up, and so this...
The current site?
The current site's about ninety, and we used to be about 160 and up to 245 at the old city well, wellfield, so, it's considerably less the hardness here, so. So that's phase one, and I guess we have some questions for the wellfield phase two. Is phase two still needed, since we have another, since we have the second wellfield going? How do we go about starting phase two? How do we fund phase two? And when should we start phase two? Is phase two still needed? Originally, wellfield is still over fifty years old, it's still, every year it's getting older. It's not getting younger. The maintenance cost is rising, recently we had to take apart from well seven, which, as you know, we haven't been operating for years, and actually using well number two to get it back up and operational. So we're scavenging parts from one well to another. Contamination is still in the area, and we need to secure a more stable water source for the citizens of Cadillac. So I do think that we still need the second phase. Currently, we have solved one problem, which is all our eggs in one basket. We do have two wellfields right now. It's just one of our wellfields is in the contamin, in the site that has contamination, is using equipment that's old, it's just, it's wore out, and we cannot, sooner or later, we're going to replace it. So whether we do it now, or, you know, next year, it's, it's going to need to be replaced. But we, at least we've solved the problem is, if we get a contamination hit in the old wellfield, we have water for the citizens of Cadillac to drink, and plenty of it, so, that's the, that's the good part. How do we start phase two? We need to go out and find new wellfield sites, you know, we need, you know, enough acreage that we can actually put down multiple wells. You know, we have to decide whether we want to do areas with one well in a service building and all that, or if we want to do, as we currently have, one service building, three or four wells, in, to share the cost of that service building, to make it more economical. I think we were going towards another area that would have one well, a service building and some wells going to it, but that's a discussion we need to have, how, what do we want to do in the next stage? We need an engineering firm to do a preliminary and hydro geological study, so when we do secure, or with this engineering firm, we go out and we build this phase two engineering study out, as I said, with this engineering firm, they would go out and they would select the parcels that meet our criteria, or meet the criteria for clean water. They would, the select engineers would evaluate the potential sites, they'd say, these are the good sites. The engineers would set criteria for the potential site. We need it to produce a thousand gallons per minute, we need the iron to be such and such a level, we need the geological formations to be such and such, you know, so I think our, our first step in phase two is to actually hire an engineering firm, go out to bid, and hire an engineering firm to do the study for the acquisition of the parcel. The, we'd actually do this, that would be phase one of the second phase. The second phase would be hiring an engineering firm to design, once we picked out the parcel, to design the new wellfield, because without knowing what the geology is, you can't really design a well or design a pumping system without knowing what kind of aquifer you're pumping from. So we need first to get an engineer on, on board, we need to have that engineer help us, guide us to get a potential site, and get in a site we all agree on, that has good water, meets our criteria, and then we need to, after that, go out and bid for an engineer to actually engineer the site.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, that may or may not necessarily be the same engineering firm. It could be, but it doesn't have to be. The city certainly could choose to bid out again, if it so wanted to, for those design services. So really, you know, you need, you need an engineering firm, might be the same one, might be two, there's two different studies, so.
Right, right, that's what I was going to add. The first study would be to help us pick out the area, make sure it's a good potential area, the second one would be to actually design it at that area.
And Jeff, you had mentioned again about the, the efficiencies of having a single service facility that services...
Correct.
You know, the, the site, which is more economical than having a service facility for each well, if the wells were separate.
Right.
What that requires, however, is approximately four to five acres per well, if you're going to have them all staged on the same location. So you're looking at obtaining a tract of land that is, you know...
Twenty acres. Fifteen, fifteen, twenty acres.
Yeah, fifteen to twenty acres, you know, maybe closer to fifteen if, if possible, but you're looking at getting a chunk of land about the size of the current Crosby Road site, where it's, how many acres is that?
I think that's twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four.
So there's a little more room there, but it's...
An acre of land is 202 feet by 202 feet, and the state of Michigan requires a, a well to be 200 feet from the boundary, so you need four acres to have one well, and you'd have a 16 by 16 parcel that you could put a well down, if you had four acres, right in the center. You'd have a 16-foot area you could put a well down on, because you need the 200-foot setbacks from everybody's property line. So as on the Crosby Street Road, we have, I think it's 12 acres, I figured out, one, 12 acres of setback land that's along our edges, that we can't put a well in, because the state says it's too, you know, it's on 200-foot back you got to be from that, so we have like 12 acres out of the 24 that we can't even put a well in, because it's too close to the other people's property line, so. But that's any site, I mean, that's... So as Marcus said, how do we fund phase two? We can self-fund it, we could sell bonds, we could use our reserves, you know, I see Owen cringing there, or we can do the drinking water revolving fund, we could do a combination of both. Remember, the drinking water revolving fund, that is a loan, so whatever we don't, whatever we pay for, we don't have to pay interest on the loan. So if we do a combination of the both, if we, you know, if we just, if we fund it all. This time, we got a huge amount of principal forgiveness through the DWRF. That was a, that was the year we applied a program, that was there the year we applied. It's not an every-year program, so you don't know from year to year if there's going to be that principal forgiveness. If it is, it makes sense to put it all on that, but unfortunately, the state doesn't tell you ahead if there's going to be principal forgiveness or not, so.
What was that amount again? That was...
I think it was 15% on non-green items and 40% on green items, and I think we rounded out like 22%, 20, 22% on our principal forgiveness of what we had, so it was a very significant amount, because we had some green items and some not green items, so, but it was a significant amount, so, but...
That was by going with the D...
DWRF, drinking water revolving fund, and it was just something that we lucked out, nobody told us beforehand. In the, in the sewer side, the SRF, surface sewer revolving fund, they actually will have something that's called the S2 grant, which pays for engineering, and they'll announce that beforehand, that they have that. On the water side, it's kind of a surprise whether they have it or not, and they, they don't tell you ahead of time, so, I don't know why.
Jeff, we sell bonds also for phase one?
I do, I do believe we had to...
What were the bonds for?
The, well, the DWRF works through the sale of bonds, but the, it's kind of a negotiated sale through the Michigan Finance Authority, so it's kind of, it's not an open market, competitive sale of bonds, it's a, it's a sale of bonds through the MFA, where they then subsidize the interest rate, so.
Right. And the other one, where I said self-funded or we sell bonds, it would be open to everybody if we did it ourselves, or the city.
Right, the interest rate would be higher.
And the interest rate would be higher, so, we got a phenomenal interest rate on this loan, really low. So again, those are our funding options, you know, and then, excuse me, Mayor.
That's all right.
I'll go back.
How much were we saving on that premium through the DWRF? Was there a number you can guesstimate?
Premium, for the principal forgiveness, or, I want to say the 20% of 4 million, 200,000 would that be, I think?
Twenty, 20% of the 4 million?
Mm-hmm.
That would be 800. I don't think it was quite that high. The, the total project costs were under three mil- The, the total project costs were under three million.
Yeah, that's right. It did change.
So I, I think when we were looking at a three and a half to four million dollar total project, we were saying it could be as high as seven hundred thousand, but.
It did fall.
When it came in below three million, I think it, it equates to.
Five-ish.
You know, between, about five hundred, yeah.
So as we saved money on the bid, obviously, our, our savings on the principal forgiveness went down, so. When should we start phase two? I think we should start it now, but I guess it's up to you guys. I would have liked to start it last night, so. I would like to hire an engineering firm this fall. I'd like to go out to bid for that, put a bid, recommend a package together and get it out on the street, have engineering firms bid on helping us get the potential sites. I'd like to start gathering that right away, once we, once we get that firm on board. Do the testing, you know, one of the parts of getting this was we'd have to hire a firm to do the geological testing. I'd like to do that in the spring of 2013. Purchase land, or get our arrangements with the landowner if we're going DWRF, or however we're doing it, I'd like to get that in place 2013.
And if I could, I could just stop you there. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as I kind of kidded a little while ago about just forming consensus, a lot of what we're looking at doing kind of hinges on that process, and as I had stated, in the, in the process for the phase one, which was the Crosby Road site, utilization of the DWRF fund wasn't used in the site acquisition. From some brief conversation that the councils have publicly since I started two and a half years back now, or almost closer to three at this point, actually, you know, it's my understanding that the council would like to use that process from the very beginning. And so at this moment right now, where Jeff's standing in his slideshow, you know, unless there's some distinct conversation that takes place to say otherwise, we're going to work under the assumption, as we start getting things together, to find the engineer and so forth, that, that everything needs to follow the protocols that are established through that process, from the beginning, you know, through the end. And so that was, really, is, as I kind of said earlier, what, what we're looking at doing is kind of introducing this item, making sure that we're all essentially on the same page, and then staff will kind of take it from there, and we'll come back, obviously, once we have, you know, some recommendations regarding a design engineering firm, or, excuse me, a, an engineering firm to do the hydrological study, and what else are they doing?
Hydrological and the.
Site acquisition.
Yeah, so, that would, essentially, unless there's some other reason, that would be the next, the, the next step in our action steps here would be to come back with, with the recommendation after we've vetted out, so.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you were done, have you kind of come to mind how many properties you're thinking, are you still thinking of?
I'd like, you know, a good smattering of them, five, ten. Every, every site we have, we have to spend money on testing that site, so, you know, if you do a hundred, that's a hundred wells we have to put down, which are small wells, but it still costs us. I think when we had five of them done the first time, or we budgeted five of them, that was a hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, that, we get reimbursed through the DWRF, but it's still a loan, so we still have to pay back the reimbursement later on. So I would, I feel comfortable with five, but if we went higher, that'd be fine. Again, we're doing the whole city of Cadillac. It's not a person that buys an acre of land and is putting a house on it, and you have an acre of land to get your water from. We've got, you know, miles of area to look at. Of course, we don't want to be by our old well field because of the problems there, so, you know, we got to have our engineering company look and see where we want to go. Don't want to be too close to a new one, or it's as if we have one well field, it'll act as one well field, even though they might be a quarter mile apart. So with all the area we have, I think it'd take four, five, six, you know, areas to say, this is the best water, this is where I want it, because we're not limited to one acre, or two acres, you know, we've got miles to check, so. But we're open to anything.
I just wanted to add that, you know, we're certainly going to rely a lot on, you know, what the, the engineering firm has to say. They're going to have to, any, any parcel of land that, that they're going to be looking at, they're going to have to determine if it's, you know, big enough, if the quality's there, and if, if the ability to pump a thousand gallons per minute, I believe, is, is also there, you know, before it could really be, be something that, that we could look at, coming back to city council and saying, hey, you know, we think we should, we should try to acquire that parcel. So they also wanted to add, too, is that there's been, you know, some conversation with one of our neighboring townships with respect to perhaps some opportunity at looking at land there that I believe is owned by the state currently, as, as maybe a potential site. So, you know, there might be, you know, some, some unique opportunities before the city are looking at some, at some locations. Now, obviously, the further outside of the city that this is, you know, the more money that would have to be spent in putting in all the infrastructure under the ground, and so, you know, there, there is certainly a, a cost component to this that would have to get vetted through and looked at, regardless of where it is, whether in the city or out of the city. But in any case, that was all that we were looking forward at doing this evening. Jeff, I didn't mean to cut you short unless there was, I don't think there's another slide, was it?
No, just the last thing is, after we did purchase land, or however we got, you know, if the guy was reserving it for us to purchase with DWRF funds, our, our next step would be to hire, go out to bid and hire an engineering firm to complete the DWRF application, to do the construction plans, and to bid out the documents, so we get a new construction firm. So, you know, as Marcus said, it might be the same engineering firm for both of them. If the council wants to just bid it out once, let the, you know, engineering firm do both halves. I, I know, talking to our current engineer, he'd said, said it'd be hard to do that, because you do not know what infrastructure you need for the, until you actually have the land in hand, I guess, or know the site and know the geology. So I think the smart thing would be to bid out the, the first part of it, which would be to get the parcel we want, do everything to get that parcel we want, and then the second phase would be actually to construct it on that. On that, following the DWRF purchasing, obviously, we'd have to do the federal, federal appraisal, and we couldn't, the DWRF wouldn't reimburse us for more than the federal appraisal. So if it was more and the council wanted it, you know.
We'd have to self-fund the balance.
We'd have to self-fund the balance, but they would only reimburse us the federal appraisal amount, so.
That's one of the big, if I was pushing, I'd say DWRF loan with the land purchases, because I think it protects, and I know we have a totally different group of decision-makers, but last time it was, it pursued the old council to not pursue the DWRF loan with the land purchases, and this completely secures. Instead of paying ten times the value of a property in order to get that loan, you have to be within a range of the federal appraisal, and I think we have enough properties, when it's all said and done, we'll end up probably saving a million dollars, or maybe eight hundred thousand on the full project by doing it this route, so. And the loan rates are probably just as good as they were, it makes sense to pursue it. I don't think, this should be good for getting high-quality water to residents and not, not have people making profitable deals on it. That shouldn't be the, the underlying goal, and this helps prevent that.
Okay, any questions, council, for Mr. Deetland? Did a nice job. There you go.
The water tastes good.
Tastes great.
That's what I want to hear. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Not any question, Mr. Mayor, if I may just simply add, before we move on?
Certainly.
We are preparing to bring forward some documentation about a grant opportunity that we have, to acquire the necessary infrastructure to actually fluoridate the water, the drinking water that we have. I believe Cadillac is the largest city in the state that currently does not do that. There is an opportunity for us to look at doing that, and no, I don't believe there's any additional cost to the city. And again, and for me, information's forthcoming. I don't have it now, otherwise I would have shared it tonight. But I do hope to have some information that I can share with council, before we apply for the grant, make sure that we're all in consensus.
Just tell you what, the consensus of the past city, the past city had a consensus that fluoridation.
Have to touch it.
No, it was actually to take it to the voters and let the voters vote it up or down. Whether that would be good or bad leadership, I'm not sure, but that is what the position was, it wasn't.
Didn't they try?
It might have been against it, but they.
No, not to touch it, yeah, because it's so controversial.
Well, and the way to handle that, I think, in the past, it was to have a vote up and down by the public, and let the public decide. That was during the Pete Stocker years, and he had a basis that was well thought out for whatever reasons.
Again, I'm only offering it for information purposes, that there's a grant opportunity that we, that we have before us, and similar to other grants that the city has, has secured over the last year or so, we've tried to come before you as much as we could in advance of applying for the grant, just to, again, make sure that the, the support of the council is there, because if we apply for a grant and are lucky enough to get it, and then the, the council support waivers or isn't there, then that puts us in a funky position with respect to the granting agency.
Okay. That's real easy, to have a public hearing before you apply is. Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Did I miss something, or just?
Shouldn't have any trouble getting consensus, it's just I couldn't help it.
Okay. I think I might have lost my train of thought.
I'm sorry.
I think, I think the, the public hearing would be a good idea to put that out in front of the application.
Might actually be at our next meeting.
Do you think that makes sense, and to get a little PR from our various media sources to see if the public has a feeling one way or the other, before we?
Makes sense. I, I did hear that it was controversial in the past, I didn't really know how controversial it was, which is why I wanted to make sure, council first, so, we can do that.
Maybe, maybe so.
Do that.
Is that it?
That was it.
Thank you. We're done with water for now? Thank you. I guess I missed something. With that, we're down to introduction of ordinances and resolutions, and looks like we're on the property that we talked about earlier, Burlingame, but what do we have here, Marcus?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Jerry Adams is here this evening, and I know that he has, Jerry, I believe, a picture or a slide for the site, and can certainly provide some additional feedback. Essentially, this is a request that first came through the, the planning commission, and Jerry, if you wanted to walk us through the slides, that'd be super.
Yes, so quickly. You're being asked tonight to set a public hearing on that, essentially, is it for the rezoning of a piece of property at 1119 Burlingame, Burlingame Street? And the property, why don't you go to the next slide, if you would? The property is currently zoned RMH, it's a residential mobile home classification, and the request, which has been made by TTP Financial Group, which is Don's Auto Clinic, is to rezone the parcel of property to a B3 general commercial. And essentially, the piece of property, I think you can tell, abuts the Don's Auto Clinic site on the, on the east. And historically, what's happened, and let me walk over here, over the years, Don's Auto Clinic has been purchasing the sites along Burlingame. Typically, these have been single-family sites, and acquiring the properties and then melding them into their automotive operation, and that's what you're, what you're doing here. This came before the planning commission in the form of a public hearing on August 27th, 2012, and a motion was made at the planning commission to recommend the rezoning. The vote was eight to zero, so it was unanimous. And the planning commission, and I'll have a larger or more fuller report when the actual your hearing takes place, but the planning commission, let's go to the next one, we can go to the next one, keep going for a second, okay. Planning commission found the proposed B3 general commercial district classification to be compatible with surrounding land uses and the area zone district classifications consistent with the city master plan, capable of being fully supported by existing public facilities and services. This includes the range of uses provided for by the B3 classification, that is, they could all be fully serviced by existing public facilities and services. They felt it was more appropriate, the proposed B3 classification for this site than the existing zone district classification, and they didn't consider it spot zoning. In making the recommendation, the planning commission did give full consideration to all public comments, and except for the applicant, there weren't any other public comments, per se, made at the public hearing. There were some written comments that were made, and those are in your packet, and again, those can be discussed at the, at your public hearing. We did include in your packet a planning commission or a planning commission rezoning report, which is required by statute. And if you will, let's do go back, just real quickly, my last slide that I'll show. Oops, go back. Oops, I'm sorry, right here. Just kind of give you an idea of how the B3 classification fits into this. Again, this is Don's Auto Clinic. Essentially, over, over the years, so to speak, this entire area, these blocks, all the way from 13th Street down to here, the block between Mitchell and Burlingame, they've been rezoned to B3. And right now, there's only this little chunk that's left, that's not zoned B3. There's also a pathway that's owned by the school, for some reason, I don't know why, it's zoned RMH, but it was never, never zoned B3. So the goal essentially is to have this entire set of blocks zoned B3 for general commercial development. It's one of the city's prime commercial areas, and so therefore, you'll probably see some additional requests in the future. You might say, well, why haven't we already gone ahead and rezoned those properties some time ago? There are homes on the properties, and if we were to rezone them right now, it would put them into a legal non-conforming status, and as long as there's a resident living there, if something were to happen to their home, burned down, for example, or be significantly destroyed by fire, let's say, it could create some difficulties for them if they wanted to rebuild, which they could do. Under the B3 classification, it would be much more difficult for them to rebuild. Secondly, by maintaining the, the current classification, at least for their remaining property owners, it does necessitate that the adjoining or surrounding B3 property owners, they have to implement like privacy fencing, landscaping, and so forth, if they were to do any development. So it's, it's advantageous for those existing property owners who are living there. What's happening is, you know, one by one, they are though selling their properties, in this case, to Don's Auto Clinic. Again, all we're asking you to do tonight is set a public hearing to, for the consideration of the rezoning of this property from RMH to B3.
Do we send the same notice out again for our next hearing that we did for the planning commission to the neighbors?
That's up to the, in terms of the planning commission, we sent notices out to all property owners, residents within three hundred feet. In terms of your public hearings, I don't believe you, you do that.
No, I publish it.
You just do the publication? There's nothing by state statute that requires you to notify everybody within three hundred feet, and it's not in the city code to do so.
But at least four, four homes, or one, two, three?
Four properties that were budding, just east, up Burlingame, game east of this, were opposed to the rezoning. And their comments were taken into consideration by the planning commission?
Yes, they were. Okay, we need a motion to set a public hearing. Anything else from Jerry, anyone? Marcus, I don't mean anything else on your side, too?
The date, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, for the hearing would be October 1st.
Okay. And then can we have a motion consistent with that, please?
I make a motion to, excuse me, to approve the resolution to introduce ordinance number 201212 to rezone 1119 Burlingame Street, and to set a public hearing for October 1st, 2012.
Support. There's a motion and support. Any other discussion? Chris, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ballman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Yelima?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. And, does that cover you, Marcus?
Yes, it does, Mr. Mayor.
There apparently are no adoptions of ordinances and resolutions. Do we have reports of boards and commissions you wish to talk about, or minutes at this time?
None at this time.
Okay, public comments. We have Harry again. Mr. Yonkman, thanks for coming to our meeting again, all the way from Boone. This was the citizen of the way.
Councilmembers, Harry Yonkman-Boone, I got to speak again tonight, because Mike wasn't here.
here last time. Got to keep him in the loop. Well, anyhow, after I spoke last, three gentlemen said they didn't understand a thing I said. And that's Barnett, Hinton and McCready. I got some history for the mayor if I can.
Sure. Come on up. I think I indicated I didn't get the whole story, but I put two and two together.
Is this the Blueberry Festival?
Okay. He's got pictures.
And then the story, that's from 2007. 2007.
2007. I was spotted at the Blueberry Festival playing piano.
Well, there's the pictures.
And the comment that I got with the pictures is that the music was worth my time.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's a thank you. He's got me again.
And Doug said that, you know, if he had that study, he can make his decision. And I kind of stole for somebody to say it wasn't really a study, but nobody did. It made me look like I didn't know what I was talking about. But anyhow, my notes on that hearing. I sat here and had coffee and cookies with the Platte Moran guys for about 40 minutes and it was full of questions. And I got down here that Skippers arrived at 6:45 and Rick, he come in right after her and 10 minutes to 7, Marcus came in and Rick and him left. This is from my... And what the Platte Moran people were interested in was the Alcone Fire Department's. And my comment was they add provincial thinking. But anyhow, I ain't going to tell you what I said about everything else. That's...
Would you like these pictures back, Harry?
Well, that's about all I got for Mike, except that you missed the show.
It's good to be back.
Thank you, Harry.
Harry, would you like the pictures back?
No, no, no. I just buried them off today.
Reminded me of what I used to look five years ago. Skinnier. A few other things. Anyone else from the public? I know we do have a young man in the building tonight. Would you mind coming forward, young man? He's one of our scouts. If you could give us your name, your reason for being here and possibly the leaders of your group?
My name is Jeff Bormer. I'm from Troop 125. The reason that I'm here is to help fulfill a requirement on one of my merit badges. It's an Eagle required when I'm on my way to Eagle and hoping to get it soon.
All right. Who's your troop leader? Do you know?
Carl Tomaszewski.
Okay. We know Carl. Anything else you want to share with us? You got to see our meeting in government in action, which isn't always the best picture, but it is democracy in action.
Yeah. Mr. Dietlins, my counselor for my merit badge, so.
He can vouch for you being here.
Yeah.
Anything you found entertaining or something that may have taught you a new thing about government tonight?
Honestly, I don't really know. I took down a few notes about the water, like the new well site and...
All right. You learned something.
Did you get to go to Philmont with Mr. Dietlins?
Yeah. That was a fun experience.
This would have looked really good then on some of the top of those hills.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming and good luck with your Eagle badge. That young man has been here since seven, so he gets extra credit, I'm pretty sure, Jeff. Anyone else wishing to speak? Public comments are open. I do request that they be limited to three minutes. We certainly haven't had that problem tonight. Rich, please come forward. If you could give us your name and address, that would be great.
My name is Rich Langton and my address is 2140 East Lake Mitchell Drive, Selma Township, but business address of 106 and 1/2 South Mitchell here in Cadillac. I just, Mr. Mayor and Council, I just desired to address you as one of the committee members on the ad hoc Public Safety Committee. Spent over a year of time in working hard, I believe, as a group to present you with some very workable and I believe wise recommendations. Again, I need to remind you, all unanimously passed by that committee, which included both Council Member Spoolman and Mayor Barnett. It's a bit disheartening, I must say, to sit through a meeting and to hear lengthy discussion about these issues and to basically feel that much of that time, energy has really been wasted. And I know it could be simply sour grapes to see it in that manner and yet to have, again, very viable options presented that are budget neutral, that take into account current people serving, their expertise, as Councilmember Skippers mentioned. It seems this issue has become something that goes well beyond what our committee was asked to address. And I'm disappointed in that, I guess. Again, a council and mayor of gifted people, I would think, should be able to support our city manager as he has asked you to do so. And in that regard, I would just like to thank Councilmember Spoolman and Skippers for being willing to attempt consensus. I appreciate that. As someone who works very much with boards and committees, I appreciate those who seek to lay it out, to move forward, to reach across what seem to be divides that maybe our chasm's too wide to be bridged, but I appreciate your efforts in that behalf. I do want to thank City Manager Petya for asking me to be a part of that study committee. I did thoroughly enjoy that discussion and appreciated the opportunity to help serve the community that I've been a part of now for 21 years in an area that I have a very real passion for by way of public safety. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Okay. Anybody else? Public comment? Thanks for coming. If you're not commenting, appreciate your support and presence here and/or presence. And we're going to close public comment at this time and pop it over to go to the order. And Mr. Petya, would you mind starting us off on that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I just wanted to mention heartfelt things to the city staff involved in helping to accommodate the special events that took place in town over the holiday weekend. My understanding, everything went off without a hitch and was, excuse me, attended very well. Also, I wanted to, again, thank the City Council. I know that we had a lengthy discussion earlier this evening regarding the public safety structure. I do realize that it is a tough issue to work through and I certainly do appreciate everyone's time and energy and efforts in trying to do what you think is right for the city. Certainly looking forward to coming back with our auditor's report later this fall where we could pick up basically where we left off and move forward. So, as mentioned earlier, that process is starting now and so I don't expect necessarily to have that data until probably closer to November or December, but as soon as I have it, as we've done in the past, we'll certainly present it. Perhaps we can establish a workshop and talk about it a little more in that venue first to give ourselves some more time. But looking forward to picking up the discussion at that point. Aside from that, I certainly wish everyone a good rest of the summer and welcome fall as we know that pretty soon weather will be coming, so.
Okay. And Councilmember Malama?
Just a couple of comments. One, want to thank the committees and people that worked on bringing the sculptures here. I know that they're going to be leaving shortly. I know I've mentioned it before, but whenever we have friends coming up, they're all amazed and it's just been tremendous to watch the number of people that have participated and had their picture taken and have gone along with that. The only thing on the public safety, I want to point out that that issue's not just black and white, right or wrong, depending upon if you were on the committee or if you weren't on the committee. You know, we're talking about public funds, we're talking about safety. It's a pretty complex issue. And I think a good discussion, listening to each other's opinion, looking at the study, I guess it wasn't a study, but it was a professional group, I've learned a lot. Learned a lot by campaigning for that millage. Learned a lot of the, what's going on politically. So it's a very, it's not a simple issue. And I take it very serious and I want to make the right decision. And I want to make the right decision for the public, for the citizens, and I want to give them value for the tax dollar. And that's exactly where I'm at.
Councilmember Stevens, thanks for waiting.
Kind of, I kind of brought this up during the discussion and it, I don't know if we can get a better report of what happened. And I respect what Mr. Langton said, but going off of what, kind of the information we've been given, it concerns me about what message came from that committee and what we got. Because initially, we were told that it was going to be the millage. We, as a council, supported that committee 100%. I probably had four members of the committee afterwards critical that we were going forward with the millage. I know you did too. The fire marshal, it sounded like they wanted that. There was a request for the best available structure. It sounds like we are going forward with the best available structure. It's just a question of which way. I got to apologize, but from what I got, it was real unclear which direction. So I don't know where that, from the committee to us, the communication got lapsed, but I just want to make sure. Mr. Langton brings out some concerns that are justifiable, but I'm over here honestly saying from what we were told the committee wanted, that we've done, we're doing what they want. The only question that I don't know if the committee addressed was, are we going to go with an interim in the meantime or go forward with the best available? But we did go off that millage. I think they wanted a fire marshal unless that's not accurate and we just got to figure out. So I don't know if it'd be better from the committee or someone to get us a better understanding what was desired from that, other than that one bit of minutes would be nice. Because it is uncomfortable. I know we had that too as we thought the millage is what they wanted. Up until tonight, I did not know about the language. If we had known the language was going to be decided by the committee, I would have encouraged that to go to them and have them do the language first. And I can understand that frustration because we did not fulfill that part of it. But I did not realize that the language had been voted that the committee would come up with. And that probably would have helped before we went on a millage was to know where the language was wanted from the committee. Jumping gears though, I, again, up until this weekend, those sculptures are just amazing. People traveling. This weekend, again, to try to get a last look. Some people, it was their third visit as I was walking, where they've taken people and people traveling all over. Just an unbelievable addition. I got a chance to talk to Al Dumont with the city parks and he talked about what an addition it was this summer to them and how it benefited our parks. But, you know, that gives a credit to our staff too. Those sculptures were really nice, but having them be part of our park system, which is so nice, was awesome as well as our downtown. So, again, to all the volunteers that made that possible, definitely hats off to them.
Okay. I was in Detroit over the, well, on Labor Day and the day before and getting off the People Mover on Station Number Two was a Sue Johnson sculpture. So if you're in Detroit and are on the People Mover, it's worth getting off on that stop to see another one. It's there all the time. I'm disappointed, not in tonight at all, but I was disappointed. I did vote for what we voted for on the committee, but if anyone was sitting there, they recall my statements that were very clear that morning, is that we worked for a year on that thing, Rich and I and others. Sherry got up at 7:30 in the morning more than once. We picked somebody to do the study. We got all ready to go. We waited, waited for the study to come. The study comes and it's already, by the time it gets to us, watered down and changed and took away what I thought was the committee's work. So the committee's work, in my opinion, was flawed. I did vote for it to support the committee's work, but I disagreed with how it went down. And it wasn't fair to the committee to work that long, that hard, to have it taken out of their hands and having it changed as it came to us. That was our job and we were, in effect, denied being able to do that. And so I'm not disappointed tonight. I guess I'm also disappointed that there was no follow-through with the board's vote on the other item, which was to work on the millage and help there. But that didn't materialize for one reason or another. So I think it's a good idea that the committee get back together. We renew our discussions and proceed forward. That's what needs to happen here and to take an honest look at really where we were, which was, we worked on this thing and we waited for a report to come. And by the time we got it, it was morphed. So I don't know that the committee had a fair opportunity to really discuss items. And we did follow what was, appeared to be everyone's position. I think the positions have changed since then. It would have made sense even before talking about it tonight to take it back to that committee and to give them a better chance to weed through this. Councilmember Skippers?
I'm not going to talk about the public safety thing. I would like to talk about the water and say thank you to everyone who worked so hard to make this happen. It's in having your well field in a site contaminated by residents of your city is kind of upsetting. But I'm really glad that this is going the way it is and I hope to see it move forward. In terms of the sculptures, this was such a success. And one of the things I said in the spring when we first approved this was, I hope that this is a pilot program. And as the mayor said, there's a permanent one in Detroit. And I would love to see some of the citizens of the city who've enjoyed this so much, maybe come together and look at forming some kind of fundraising committee to start bringing more public art to our city. It obviously is a benefit of benefit to the city to put public art in the parks. So I'd like to see that move forward.
Councilmember Spoolman, thanks for waiting.
We did have an amazing festival races this weekend in town. Lot more people than we've had in the past. I think this is, it's really growing. It's an neat thing to see an annual event like that in our beautiful city. In regards to the water and the well field, with all due respect to the previous owner of that land's family, we did purchase that from the Blakely family, from Ken Blakely, I believe. And he passed away this weekend in a motorcycle accident. So our condolences to his family. We've been talking about that well field that we have now where this water came from. And I guess just a couple of last comments about the Public Safety Committee that met and the process that we've gone through tonight. You know, we've certainly talked it to death. I feel, I don't feel that the recommendations from the committee were watered down. I feel that they were a little bit different than... I feel that they were a little bit different than what were the recommendations from Plant and Moran's study. But it was the committee that took those recommendations and really wanted to make them their own. And there were a lot of people on that committee from a lot of different areas. And for me, looking in, that was, you know, that was a learning experience for me and something that I had to accept, that we were really trying to take those recommendations and make the most of them for everybody who worked in those departments and were involved in those departments. So we had a lot of input, and it's kind of disheartening to think that those recommendations came through and were not accepted. And, you know, I really believe that we need to, Marcus made this public, and that's his intention, and that's what he wanted to do, but I just think that we, as a council, need to be really careful about how much of that actual decision-making that we do, and that we really need to leave those operational issues up to him as long as they're within budget, so.
Anything else? Marcus, anything else?
No, it's not.
So we're coming back in 14 days, or actually 13?
We are coming back on Monday, September 16.
Okay. With that, thank you all for coming, especially the young lad who waited all night. Good luck on your Eagle badge. And everyone else that attended and watched tonight on TV. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.